Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Milburn Township Planning Board meeting. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, be advised that a notice that this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board, town hall, and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place at the town hall at 7:30 p.m. on April 2, 2025. Roll call, please.
Gordon.
Here.
Allison Gagnfield.
Here.
Michael Cullen.
Here.
Frank Sackman.
Here.
Graham Maturpation.
Here.
Deborah Nevers.
Here.
Jonathan Baxter.
Here.
Sarah Sixtler.
Here.
Shenee DJ.
Here.
Guest Don Helfer.
Here. A couple orders of business before we get to our application for the evening, a continuation of the application for the evening. Please be advised that Milburn Town Hall, the building which we're in, will be closed effective April 16, 2025 for renovations. All future planning board meetings will be held at Milburn Board of Education, the Education Center at 434 Milburn Ave until further notice. Dates and times will remain the same. Thank you. Second order of business, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first set of minutes is from February 5, 2025. Revision of those minutes was sent out a couple of days ago. Did everybody get a chance to review those? Are there any revisions to those? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. On second. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Minutes approved for 2/25/25. Second set of minutes are from February 12, 2025. The revisions were also circulated a couple of days ago. Are there any revisions to those revisions? Nope, I see none. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 12, 2025. On second. All in favor? Any opposed? Minutes approved. Okay, on to our next order of business for application, application 24003, continuation from the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, before we get into the meat potatoes, I'll just point out for the record, this matter was carried from the board's March 19, 2025 meeting. Notice was established months prior to that, so the board continues to have jurisdiction here and decide the case, at least as far as notice goes. With that, I believe we left off at the last hearing with cross-examination of Mr. Keller, who was a sustainable development for Milburn Township's engineer. I believe the board wanted to hear from our engineer, Ms. Callahan, as to her comments on his submission. So I think we were going to start with allowing her to kind of run through that memo and explain her positions to the board, and then from there, I think we'll turn back to further cross-examination, Mr. Keller.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to, just to put them in there, like, because I want to, I want to advise the board of this early on as opposed to, as opposed to later. It's not uncommon at this stage of the proceedings for there to be a discussion as to further extensions and future scheduling and things of that nature. There was an outstanding request at our last hearing to see if the board could possibly accommodate a special hearing. I know that they did look into that, and I know you're struggling with the challenge of trying to find a different location. I don't know where we stand on that. Certainly, the applicant is still interested in following through on that request. So at some point, maybe we could have a discussion about that whenever it's appropriate.
No, I mean, we did try and pursue that.
Yeah. Well, why don't we, we cross that bridge when we get towards the end, Mr. Levine?
That's very good. That's fine. That's for scheduling the next hearing, as per the line. What I do want to communicate to the board, though, and make clear, and I began touching on this the last time, we're now over a half a year into this application. The 95-day time period within which the statute calls for the board to take action on these types of applications expired in very early December. Tonight will mark our 11th hearing in this process. The applicant, along the way, has given seven extensions beyond those initial 95 days, and throughout this process, the applicant has made a number of stipulations on the record, things that they've agreed to, conditions of approval, planned revisions that they've agreed to make, and in some cases have made, and it's shared with the board by way of interim exhibits in terms of a number of things. Probably one of the most important ones, something that we continue to argue about now, which is the nature of the stormwater management system and the extent to which it's going to function as intended and properly in accordance with the regulations. As the board may recall, this is a substantially redesigned and revised system, substantially different from the one that we initially proposed. We undertook that, listening to and taking into account and abiding by recommendations that the board's consultants had made and concerns that members of the public had expressed with regard to that. So here we are, the last hearing, Ms. Dory presented case in chief with testimony from her, from her expert, Mr. Keller, who testified with regard to planning and engineering as well as traffic. I know subsequent to that, Ms. Callahan has submitted an updated engineer's review letter, and Mr. Keller and Ms. Dory have submitted, made submissions in rebuttal. Somewhat dismayed to see that in the objector's submission, there's a reiteration and a rehashing of a number of arguments that have already been addressed and in many instances proven to be not accurate through prior hearings. Just by way of example, Ms. Dory continues to insist that we failed to demonstrate that we comply with the lot coverage requirements of a conditional use, when in fact, at the last hearing, we pointed out with specificity and identified as applicants A8, the very exhibit that we shared with the board through live testimony, demonstrating the itemized measurements that the engineer had taken and demonstrating compliance with the, with the lot coverage requirements. She continues to assert that we're doing absolutely nothing in terms of trying to provide a buffer to the property on the western, on the western side of the property, notwithstanding the fact that we have a landscaping plan that does show landscaping proposed, and notwithstanding the fact that we stipulated on the record multiple times that we will repair and replace as necessary and maintain that existing six-foot fence along the western property line. Continues to ignore that stipulation that we've made on the record and seems to be taking the approach that we're not bound by it, and somehow we have to submit a revised plan with, I don't even know how you would show a maintained fence, I guess it would have to be a plan note reiterating what we've already shared with the board, that we fully intend to do that. You know, we, we have a report from Ms. Callahan that recommends additional soil sampling and testing that the applicant is more than happy to comply with. I think the board is familiar in a number of instances and cases where, you know, confirmatory testing, additional soil testing with regard to subsurface conditions can be done after the fact, it's not something that has to be done and submitted before the board can take action on an application. And in light of where we are now, the applicant is not willing to grant additional extensions beyond the conclusion of the next hearing, whenever that might be. So I want to share that with the board now, because you've promised to the members of the public that they'll have an opportunity to make statements. Certainly, they deserve that opportunity, should have that opportunity. So I think that's where we stand now in terms of scheduling, and I wanted to share that with the board.
So I think something you said is, is very important. I do recall that your client made representations about the fence, dealing with the buffer. To the extent you have it readily available, can you just remind us, in addition to maintaining the fence, are there any other plantings that are going to be in that buffer? Because I know there's been a lot of, as you said, dispute over what this buffer is going to be, what it's required to be, what it's not. But I know you've made many representations about it, so for the avoidance of confusion and continued debate, it'd be helpful to refresh our memories about it.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I think that's probably a fair way to characterize it, because certainly I'm not a landscape architect or an engineer, so I don't claim to be offering testimony, but I do have a copy of the most recent set of plans, and I can just simply refresh the board's recollection as to what the plan shows that's been submitted and is part of our application. There is a separate landscaping sheet. It's, so we are, we are referring to revision D to the plans that were prepared by the project engineers, E2 Project Management LLC. Rev. D is in dog, dated January 23, 2025.
We already have a copy of that, Mr. Levine?
Oh, you already do.
All right. Just making sure.
Yes. And this is the sheet that has the landscaping plan. And so along the western side, I know, I believe Mr. Keller had characterized the landscaping along the west loosely as a few shrubs. So this landscaping schedule indicates that there are Serbian spruce proposed, that there are blue spruce proposed, there are some bayberry shrubs. I'm counting, you know, it goes all up and down the western property line. I'm counting 13 MPs, which are northern bayberries, those are probably more the shrub family. I'm counting six Serbian spruce, which certainly-
Of these plantings, how many of them are new or existing?
These are all the ones that I mentioned, who are on the landscaping plan, they're all new. This doesn't even take account of any of the existing trees, which are shown on this plan as well, and many of them are quite mature. They're showing arborvitae also as being planted, as well as, let me see if I can give you a number of blue spruce. Thompson blue spruce, nine, in kind of the northwestern corner. And I can also tell you that I conferred, you know, with the applicant, to the extent that, well, we've already made this stipulation a couple of times, in terms of being willing to work with the township forester, but to the extent that the township forester, or quite frankly, even our neighbor to the west, we're more than happy to have a dialogue with, feels that some additional plantings could be added in that area, the applicant is certainly willing to work with the township's forester and the neighbor to try to do that. By doing that, we're not conceding that that is a buffer, as that term is defined under 6093, but again, we're trying to maintain our efforts to do what we can to try to be reasonable and cooperative and listen to concerns that have been expressed.
And I think that's exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to come to the proper conclusion or a good conclusion for everybody without having to admit that there is any type of buffer required.
Advocants, and I officially, Mr. Warner likes to say, "Do you stipulate?" I do officially stipulate that the applicant is prepared to do that and would accept that as a condition of approval if the board were to ever decide to approve this application.
Right. And I think just as a matter of going forward, like, legal arguments related to what is a buffer, I think we're going to probably defer that towards the destination portion of the hearing process, at least not right now, but appreciate the answer to the board's questions, at least at this point in time.
Yeah, well, very good. That probably makes sense, although I'm prepared if need be, but I appreciate it. Thanks. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ari. Just, I forgot, before we proceed, I appreciate everybody's courtroom decorum from the last meeting, we can prove a little bit on cell phones and stuff like that, but thank you very much. Please, again, be respectful to all the witnesses, counsel, board members. Please keep it quiet. Any conversations, please go outside the boardroom to have them, and if we do have conversations, I just remember that this door is open, so try to keep it down or move out of the proximity of the boardroom. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we were going to start with Martha. Martha, I think you were probably sworn in way back when, 11 years ago.
Way back when?
Right.
I don't know if you want to do it again?
Matter of safety, sorry, Martha. Do you swear referring to the testimony you're about to provide? Is it going to be the truth, the whole truth, and the truth is what we got?
I do.
As we always swear in all our board professions, to give them their test.
I just wanted to, I have some remarks tonight. I wasn't going to get into the real technical areas, because I did present, I submitted a report, and I hope you all got it, and had an opportunity to read it. So I don't believe Mr. Keller's here tonight, is he?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. So in preparation for tonight's board meeting, I reviewed Mr. Keller's design review report dated February 25, and I watched the tape of the March 19 meeting that I was unable to attend. I just want to say, with my 25-year knowledge of the surrounding neighborhood and access to township mapping, I feel Mr. Keller made a number of assumptions that are inaccurate. Now, this, I wrote this up before I got today's report from Mr. Keller, but to help the board understand the reality of the neighborhood drainage system, I prepared a response report, and I hope you've had an opportunity to review. Please understand that my purpose as the board engineer is not to advocate for anything other than a project plan that will be protective of the town. In my opinion, the system will function within the DEP guidelines and our municipal ordinances. There may be areas that need to be tweaked. I get that. I am advocating for more soils testing. We do need to determine exactly where that seasonal high water table tends to sit, so that we can understand fully that the design stormwater management system that they've designed is, will function. So, anyway, accordingly, I see no negative impact upon the township's stormwater infrastructure and no impact on any downstream residents. For any given site, there could be many stormwater management solutions that would meet the criteria established by the DEP and the township. My role as board engineer is to review the applicant's design to ensure compliance with the regulations and the local ordinances. The applicant's engineer has demonstrated that peak runoff rates will be reduced to 50%, 75%, and 80% of the existing peak runoff for the two 10- and 100-year storms respectively. The system employs green infrastructure devices as required by the DEP, such as pervious paving, sand filters, a vegetated swale, and other devices. The use of a closed detention system on the site may be preferable due to the nature of the soil and the presence of seasonal high water tables, as evidenced by the horizontal seeping soils indicating no downward movement of water, which would impair groundwater recharge capabilities. Though my review is technical in nature, I also feel that the current design is aesthetically superior to the original design, which utilized exposed detention basins. So I really feel that this is something that you're not going to see. It's not going to be a big basin at the surface that everyone's going to see as they're driving down Short Hills Road. This is all an underground system. I think we'd agree that permeable paving is a good environmental use. It's, it's more expensive than regular paving, but it's, it's really something that is, we would like to use in our own designs, if we could get enough money to pave our parking lots like that. I do agree with Mr. Keller's request, as I said, for additional soil testing, especially to confirm the depth to the water table. I believe the applicant's engineer, however, is in a better position to explain how various design coefficients that were used in the analysis were calculated. That was one of the questions that Mr. Keller brought up. For further technical clarification and overall design approach, I would suggest that Mr. Keller direct his concerns and questions to the applicant's engineer for his response. And unfortunately, I don't think E2 PM is here tonight, so.
Unfortunately, our engineer is in Italy.
It's fortunate for him.
If it makes you feel better, he said that the weather was cold and overcast.
Oh, okay, now I feel so much better. Okay, so that's all I really wanted to say. I wanted to keep it very general as to what I saw in the reports. I really think that the, the design can be tweaked. I know there are issues that Mr. Keller raised with the rain garden. I think those can be addressed. I had a problem with it as well, because I, I saw a couple different iterations on the plans, and I really would have liked to see much more detail as to the size of it, and as it runs down, like, a rain garden generally should be more horizontal, and this has more of a swale-like characteristic to it, so he did show some stones at the end of it, and I'm wondering, well, where does it go? So I need more detail on some of these things, but I think they're minor, and I think that these are things that could be addressed. I'd also like to see them addressed on, I would like to see a revised set of plans to show some of these things that we're not, you know, that are lacking, I feel are lacking right now, so. I don't know, anyone has any questions?
Hey, one question. You mentioned the stormwater system's closed, so I inquired whether or not there are perforated pipes or solid pipes, but when you say it's closed, does that mean it's not going to leak one way or the other, in or out?
The way this system is designed, and I've had extensive conversations with John Ferranti, even in Italy, I called him, and I didn't know he was in Italy. Half an hour later, he said, "Well, I'm in Italy." I'm like, "Oh, okay." But what he didn't show on the plan was, he didn't call out a liner around that brick system, the storage detention system that's below ground. And it is, this is part of the plan, is to put a liner around the whole thing to hold water. So it's holding water in the same way that a surface detention basin would hold water, but you don't see it. It's not going to sit there forever, because there's a little orifice control out the bottom of it, so that instead of all of the water going through a 12-inch pipe and tapping into our storm sewer system, it comes through a very small opening, so it's, it mitigates the flow. It's sort of like, sort of like how a dam would hold back water and just allow a small amount of water to go over. It sort of acts like a dam, but underneath the ground, it's like a cistern, so it's holding water, but just releasing it slowly into our storm sewer system, so. But the liner is impervious, and it doesn't permit infiltration, and it also does not allow, if the storm, if the water table rises up, it doesn't allow infiltration of the water table into the system. The question is what separation you have to have from the bottom of that brick system, B-R-I-X-X, it's a industry label. The question is how much depth or how much distance you have to have between the bottom of that system and the top of the water table. So that's why determining where the water table is is important, so.
So it's still not solved yet, as far as the matter?
It's, there's still, no, there's, yes, you're right. It's still not perfect, like, you couldn't go out and build it today, because we need more details with it.
There have been so many iterations. So there is still going to be a sand filter, is that correct?
Yes.
And where is that going to be?
The sand filter is on the west side of the parking lot, and what happens is the water sheet flows over the parking lot. There's an area of permeable paving in the middle of that, so that water that goes over the permeable paving will go down, go down into that brick system after it filters through gravel layers, and then it goes down into the detention area. Any water that misses that, or water that's beyond that permeable paving, goes into first the vegetated swale, and then into the sand filter, and that's where you get your quality control, the removal of total suspended solids. And that filter system is also wrapped, so not seeping down into the ground, and there's a orifice control out of that sand filter system that ends up back in the brick system, and so it is all collected. It's filtered, and then it's collected.
Okay, so I had, I think Mr. Ferranti said at one of the meetings that the sand filter was going to have under drains?
An under drain to get it over into the brick system?
Right, but I, my understanding is that if there are going to be under drains with the sand filter, then that makes that sand filter not a small-scale sand filter, and one that is then in Table 3 of the BMPs, which requires some kind of waiver?
I have, I have my table chart over there. Some of these questions I can't answer off the top of my head. These are, these are things that you may want to pose to Mr. Ferranti when he is available the next time. I can't, you know, I don't know every intricacy. I know in general how the system works, but.
Okay, so Mr. Ferranti would be the person to ask about the waiver that they would require for that sand filter? Okay.
Martha, can you, can you comment about the buffer? You know, there's been a lot of back and forth, and I'm just hoping to get your interpretation on, you know.
It's, it's really more of a planning kind of a thing, out of the code. I don't know if, yeah, if you want to ask Graham, or planning or zoning. I did answer that question in my report, but it is more of a planning thing, so.
One more question for you for me. If, I know you don't know, you said you don't know the details, but even with all of the questions, or questions or issues that Mr. Keller brought up, is there enough margin in the way the system is designed to handle everything that he's brought up, or would it need to be enlarged in some way or modified?
The way I would see that it may have to be modified is if it is too close to the seasonal high water table. In that case, you would have to shorten it and maybe spread it out, so it would be shallower, but not as deep, but it would still function in the same manner. It's like an industry-accepted way of handling large amounts of storm water, and they use it on industrial sites. They, it's, you know, this is actually kind of a small place to use it, a small area, but it, it would work here, so, but it could be modified, and that's something I'd want to ask John Ferranti about, or have him look at. But again, he would need to get some better information with regard to where the seasonal high water table is, so.
And if they do more soil testing, will that sort of solve the question about whether it's this C or D soil?
Yes, it would. You would, yeah, because the category, the hydrologic soil group category, in the Booton Soil Strata, it's generally a C, and he assumed a D, which is less or no infiltration. If you do strict soil testing, you go out and take samples, you can determine which one it is exactly, and there's combination soils. And as well, in this area, as all of you who live here, if you've ever done work on your house and have dug in the soils, they're different from, just because this is terminal moraine here, where we are, this is where the glaciers ended, and they just, once they started receding, they just dropped everything they had. Here in Short Hills, I mean, this is really where it stopped, areas of it, and I've been doing this for 25 years. I've been inspecting dry well installations on residential properties and other bigger properties, and it's amazing to go from, you can go from one site, one house, and right next door, there'll be sand, and on this site, there's clay, and it can be just 100 feet apart. So you never know what you're going to get. So I think it really does warrant more soil testing, especially in areas where we specifically know, like the sand filter, or even the rain garden, what, what kind of soil we have. It, it just gives a better comfort to know what, you know, whether or not the BMPs are going to work.
So then, without that additional testing, would it be fair to say you don't really know for certain if the BMPs are going to work?
Yeah, I think I would say that. I would want to have a little more comfort knowing what's, what's actually out in the ground and where that water table is.
You made that an official request, did you?
Certainly. Mr. Levine?
Yes, I understand that's a request. Yes, understood.
Okay.
Yes.
So you had mentioned that if the, if the water table is too high, they would have to spread over a wider area of the system. Is there room, in your opinion, on this property to spread it?
Oh, yes, yeah, I think so. They could, they could spread it out over the whole width of the parking lot and length of the parking lot. Right now, it's concentrated beneath where the permeable paving is.
Regardless of the soil sampling, it is an issue that could be remedied, then?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Levine, do you have any questions for Ms. Keller?
I do not.
So just before we end with her, just want to confirm, you guys would be complying with everything in her March 25th, 2025 memo? Is there anything that you're accepting? Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, I guess we can bring up, anyone else have any questions for Martha before we dismiss her? Nope, okay. I guess we'll bring Mr. Keller back up then, if, or further across.
Can I just ask Mr. Levine a question?
Martha, what's your?
Is Mr. Ferranti coming back?
Yes.
Okay, so he will be back at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Unless he's going to Italy again, and I don't know about it. Yeah, that's certainly our intent.
Maybe he'll stay.
Maybe he'll stay.
Okay. I think the public get to ask questions of?
Ms. Callahan?
Ms. Callahan, yeah.
Okay, we had thought afterwards, but if...
Typically, board professionals aren't usually questioned by the public. I mean, that's certainly something we could entertain, I don't know, I don't think it's needed tonight.
That's how we've been doing it.
Yeah, it just depends on the order that we go.
Okay, all right.
Cynthia? All right. Martha, you're not done yet, unfortunately.
Okay.
Are there any members of the public who would like to ask Ms. Callahan a question on her testimony or her report? Hopefully, everybody who's gotten the report from the website.
I just had one question of Ms. Callahan. The applicants definitely, they would apply with the March 25th report, so will you be reviewing revised plans? Will they be submitting the soil testing review for compliance?
I'm assuming they would. The soil test borings were included with the stormwater management plan, so.
Right, with the additional soil testing and revised plans we submit before the next meeting?
I think it's a question for the applicant, for Ms. Callahan.
Wait, just, oh, yeah. Okay, cool. They're busy, so we'll take a question for you, sir. Do you want to wait for them?
All right.
Spell your name.
E-T-A-I Harrel, H-A-R-E-L, 45 Woodfield Drive, Short Hills.
I just had a similar question to Mr. Biller. Whether it's a development like this or a home, typically, there's like engineering designs, dry wells, things of that nature. Is it common if a applicant gets the building permit or gets the opportunity to build this, they go out there, they start digging, they find groundwater or whatever, is it common to go back to the engineer and request changes?
That, that's exactly what we do. When we're doing residential inspections?
Yeah.
And you come up against an issue that you didn't expect?
Right.
And maybe you're, you, you call us and you say, look, dry well's just not going to work, I got water pouring into this. We don't make the decision, we don't design it.
Right.
But we, we would call the engineer, or you would call the engineer, but in any case, your engineer would come out, look at the situation, and redesign the plan, would resubmit to the township, and we'd take a look at it at that point.
So like, in a site like this, if you're talking about a three and a quarter acre site, I mean, there's only so many test holes that you can do. I mean, obviously, you can do more in the areas where the, where these dry wells are going to be, dry wells, BMPs?
Well, the, yeah, BMPs is just a general term for different devices that infiltrate water or treat storm water.
So just, basically, it's not unusual if you approve a set of plans, if there's issues that you run into, then builder, whoever comes back, and you can redesign it and then resubmit it for your approval. To his point, you can widen it, you can make adjustments, you can move it slightly 10 feet over or whatever.
Right, yeah, what you couldn't do is eliminate it altogether.
Correct.
You know, it would have to be something that is in keeping with what's been approved, maybe slightly modified, but at some point, you have to use good engineer and judgment and, and understand that we're not going to all of a sudden change the characteristics of the flow, we're not going to change what the DEP requirements, they've met the DEP requirements, they've demonstrated that, they can't change it in such a way that those DEP requirements are no longer being followed, the standards aren't being followed, and we wouldn't permit that to happen.
Right.
So.
Got it. So just, basically, just to sum up, I mean, in your professional opinion, based on the size of the property and the size of, number and size of these BMPs, if there was additional groundwater, you're pretty confident that it could be redesigned to still qualify with all those DEP regulations?
Yes, I, I think so. Because I'm not expecting, you know, huge amounts of ground, just from what I've seen in the test bits that he's done already.
Okay, thank you.
Jeffrey Field, live in Alexander Lane. Just want to understand, our period's only to question on her report and her comments on the presentation at the last meeting. When I was at the last meeting, I think it was the recommendation of the objectors expert that in his professional capacity, he would not recommend a board to approve the application in the state that it was in. Do you agree with that, his, his expert opinion, or do you agree or disagree? Would you recommend, based on what we have now, that the board approve the application as it stands?
You asked me that question?
No, I'm asking, because he testified, and he gave it to her opinion, that when he represents boards, he would not recommend to his client, the board, to approve the application in the, in the state that it was in, as we'll say at the last meeting. Would you, do you agree with that, or you, would you recommend the approval of this application based on?
If, if there's a substantial change that is required, then we would definitely want to see revised plans.
How do you define substantial? Is it based on getting these borings?
I would think so, yes, that's, that's what we're, we're asking to be done, because that may affect the design as it's shown on the plan today.
I might not be clear, but is it your recommendation to this board, based on what's been presented to it as of today, and based on your report, would you recommend that they approve the application? Or would you say, hold it, hold off till you get my?
I give them information, I don't make the recommendation that they, it's up to them to decide.
Don't experts give recommendations? I mean, either reports?
I'm not going to recommend that they deny or approve.
All right, that's, thank you. But will we have an opportunity to question, not just the engineer, but the planner on various reports that they have prepared? We've not, the, the public has not had an opportunity, because there are certain things that I think that has to be addressed for the record. Will we have an opportunity?
We may cross that bridge at some point.
All right.
Anything else for Ms. Callahan?
Mr. Levine, what was the answer about getting this soil testing done?
So the answer, you know, my understanding is that Ms. Callahan, which is very typically the case, I'm sure the board is familiar with this, I'm sure, excuse me, Ms. Callahan's familiar with this, we took her request for additional testing and sampling to mean that she would, you know, want that. We view that as something that can be handled as a, as a condition of approval, not something that would have to be performed and submitted in 10 days' advance and reviewed before the board is in a position to take action on the application. Having said that, I also fully agree that if that testing were to show a, a substantial or material change to the, to the stormwater management system, i.e., you know, right now, the, the testimony and the understanding is that if the system has to be tweaked, if you will, due to the seasonal high water table, you would do that by making it, making it shallower and wider. And there was a follow-up question, is there a sufficient space on this three-acre property in order to accomplish that? And the answer was, yes, absolutely. If that's not the case, if we somehow had, you know, we're not able to, to solve it that way, certainly, we can't encroach on a neighboring property or violate any other DEP regs, that would be clearly a substantial change, we would need to get an amended approval to do that. But provided that these follow-up sampling confirms the, not only the information that we've provided thus far, but the soundness of the design that we've submitted, we see no reason why that cannot be handled as a condition of approval, understanding that if, if we're surprised to learn that this follow-up testing's not consistent or shows a problem that requires a significant change in the system, we would have to.
Okay. For, for Ms. Callahan?
Ms. Callahan, yes.
Ms. Callahan? I have a question. Do you agree with Mr. Levine's characterization that this kind of alteration would be a condition of approval rather than require a revision of plans and 10-day notice in the whole process?
I, I think that it could be. I mean, because we're, we would hold them responsible for it. I mean, I would follow up and make sure that it was done.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is what we do.
You think that would be sufficient?
And it could be, it could be submitted as, as the compliance set of drawings, compliant with the resolution and all the conditions in the resolution, because they submit a set of drawings for resolution compliance. We review them at that point. And if we had an issue with, hey, you didn't even change the stormwater system, you know, we're rejecting this because, you know, we clearly said it had to be done. So, I mean, yeah, we would make sure, and we would do all the inspections and...
All right, thank you.
Okay.
We got one more.
Charles Bambara, 37, Keats Road. Question, would you be the one to speak to the safety aspects of installing a sloped swale with water, with waters going in?
Keep it to her testimony and her report. So I don't think, we talked about safety in the report.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll bring it up later then.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Steven Chau, 222 Park Road. Regarding the, the stormwater water system, where does, does the, the, the stormwater system release the water?
It's connected into the stormwater system that is in the street.
Okay. I live across from under the property, there's a cover east of that, that go off from my, my property.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, where do you?
Two, two Park Roads.
Oh, so you're the first house on the corner?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
You have water behind your yard, you have the pool, the little ponds, and this is not at all connected to the system you have.
Oh, it's not connected, so the, the water will be released elsewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I, I did that, when that pipe that was going across Old Short Hills Road, I was in charge of that project, and those two systems are not connected at all. They eventually meet in the tributary to the West Branch of the railway, but they don't meet up at your house. So you'll have no impact whatsoever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just spell your name.
Natalia Kashirina, K-A-S-H-I-R-I-N-A. So the question for me, for me is, if we do, do soil testing, we'll start digging and we hit the clay, just clay, nothing else there, you know, doesn't absorb the water, and we need to make this, you know, water absorbing system much wider, how will it, can it end up in cutting more trees, cutting more vegetation?
No, I, I think, first of all, I think that if you hit clay, this whole system is ripped, and it does not infiltrate. So it doesn't matter if there's clay there or not, because it's not designed to infiltrate into the soil. But if we, if, it's the seasonal high water table that is the limiting issue. If that's too high, then the system has to shrink vertically and spread out horizontally.
Yeah, that's the one.
Spreading out like 200 feet, and it's just a small amount. You're losing some volume in the, in the vertical plane and just spreading it out over a wider area. So it's shallower and wider.
So we don't know exactly for, by how much it's going to spread until we do the testing?
Yeah, until we do the testing, that cannot be determined.
Yes, so you agree that we need to do the testing before to understand for how much water it will be?
That's, that's right. And I suggested that, the brick system could be, you could specify a different, they come in modules, and you could specify a different one that's shorter, and just use more of them in a horizontal fashion. But that might not be the only solution. Mr. Ferranti may come up with something different. If there's, he discovers where that seasonal high water table is, he'll say, okay, we're going to use this kind of system. I mean, there are so many different ways that you can treat this and handle this specific problem. So I suggest that that is something that could be done, but that may not necessarily be the ultimate solution if there is a high water table. So it's up to the engineer. He does the plan, submits it, and I look at it, but I don't design.
Yeah, so until we have the results for the test, we don't know exactly how it's going to affect the size, how it's going to affect the property and overall plan of the...
Even if it got bigger, you would never see it because it's below ground.
Okay, so it's important to get the results of the testing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jean Pasternak, 342 Hobart. Martha, I have a question. I just want to understand the practical way this happens if something is found after work has begun. I, I'm thinking of the property next to mine that had been built, a new home that I think got approval from your team. And then, because I asked a question about an possible accessory use of a patio, that instigated a further review of the plan, and then what I noticed was the entire backyard was dug up, and a new retention basin was put in, and there was just more, more inspection done. So I just want to understand, how does this actually work? Like, would, would your team take the initiative to, to understand the soil samplings and then ensure that new plans were made, or does someone have to instigate this? I really don't understand exactly how it works.
Are you referring back to Mr. Harrel's question when he said things happen on a site sometimes that weren't planned and you didn't expect?
Not really, it's not exactly, what I'm saying is, I had an instance right next door to me at a property next to my home, that I instigated a question to your team, and they did come out, but it wasn't something you inspected, it was something that I noticed that had nothing to do with the retention, right?
I think there was an accessory use that was built too close to the property lines.
Correct, right, then that instigated further...
Ladies, excuse me, I'm sorry, before we go any further, Ms. Pasternak, just because you're, you're kind of giving some testimony, can I, I just want to swear?
I'm asking a question, I'm just asking, I'm asking a question, how does, how does the process work exactly?
I'm not going to stop you from asking the question, just that you've made, you've made some fact statements, I just want to make sure you're sworn, okay?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Do you swear from the testimony provided and may continue to provide with the truth the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
Of course.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
So it would be, if something unexpected came up, it would be noticed by the inspectors on the site?
Okay.
It would, we would have a relationship, we would establish for, this is a major development. So for a major development, we would establish a relationship with the construction manager on the site, we meaning the town hall team, the engineers, the inspectors in the building department. We would know who this is. They would notify us, or our inspectors would notice something is going wrong.
Okay.
It's not according to plan, we didn't expect this. This would be brought to our attention. If we had to bring in the architect, because it was an architectural reason, or the engineer, Mr. Ferranti, we would bring them in, but it would be...
So you're saying that it would be different because it's a major plan rather than a residential development, that maybe a neighbor, like I did, had to instigate an inquiry from your, from your department, as opposed to this project where you will be on site? Is that, is that what you're saying?
We do tell neighbors, being our eyes and ears sometimes, because we don't hire, you know, outside inspectors to go around the neighborhood and watch every single residential project that's going down. But a major development, we do.
Okay. It, it looked like it was major, what was done after the fact, so I'm just kind of a little worried, but thank you. Thanks.
I do have a question. Martha, in your years of experience, and if Mr. Keller's testimony wouldn't have been presented to us at the last meeting, would you have asked for additional bore samples?
I would have, because one thing that wasn't clear to me, and it wasn't clearly shown on the plan... the plan was that this was a closed system that was wrapped. This, this was not called out on the plan. And so, I would, once I learned that, and then you, you understand it's, that with a system like that, you have to be, you have to know where that seasonal high water table is. I, I think I would have requested him to have more soil samples. So, I agree with Mr. Keller.
Right. And then that, what would that have processed? Like, when would you have requested that? Because my understanding was we were going off your approved engineering or stormwater plans.
Right.
So, when would that have happened?
Well, I did talk to Mr. Ferranti just to get to understand how his system worked, to make it more clear because I was not, that's when I learned that it was a totally enclosed line system. So, at that point, we discussed, you know, where the seasonal high water table was and I didn't write a special report to say that, but I knew these reports were coming in and it would be brought up, so...
So, Martha, I have a question. I need to understand this, following the question that the members of the project did, inspections, is there any schedule of inspections that you have to go to be, you or your team to visit the site after excavation, after whatever? You know, in many work, there are different inspections. Do you have a schedule when, or you have to trust the construction manager that will tell you that they find something different?
No, we don't wait for, you know, something unusual to happen. We would, we would be out there on a regular basis or perhaps even hire someone to do the inspections for us and with an escrow fee to the applicant. And they would, we would be in touch with the construction manager and we'd be checking with them like we're doing with Chatham Woodland project right now, the NE Says project. We're in touch with them. They keep us informed. We're on their emails. So, we know what's going on and we know when we should be out there for inspections. So, there isn't like a published schedule that I could give you right now. I, you know... But we would probably have a kickoff meeting, get everyone on board, the whole team. And, you know, there would be probably a quasi-construction schedule that would be established, which, you know, from the second week on is probably out the window, but I mean, it changes as things progress. But I would expect that we would be, and I would ask that we would be on the email loop so that we would know what's going on.
Martha, got a question. Any idea on how long it takes to do the soil tests?
They can, well, I don't know, but the tests themselves can be done in a day, but they have to do, they may do infiltration tests, which takes a couple of days maybe in the lab. Not really sure. Maybe break in those.
Can it be done within a month?
Oh, yeah. I think you could have them done in a couple of days.
The biggest lead time is getting equipment, the schedule of the, of the tester to get them out there with the boring?
To line up someone to, to actually come out and do it.
They'll do the test in one day and it'll take about a week to turn around and get the results.
I have a question. Is there a specific standard or guidelines that we are enforcing for the types of sample or the sufficiency of the sample that will be provided?
You mean the borings that they do?
Borings.
No, that's, it's like a specialty thing that they know what they're doing. Like, you hire a surveyor to do a survey, they know how to do it. There's, I mean, there are guidelines, but you expect when you hire a professional, they're going to follow their guidelines.
Were you at the last hearing?
No.
I was not, I was not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were here. Okay, yeah. Was someone else from Joe's office here last time?
Probably Joe Fisher here.
Joe Fisher.
You're from his office, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, can I just swear in real quick just?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were here last time. My apologies. All right, and just name for the record, please.
Gregory Rapp.
All right. Mr. Rapp, do you swear from the testimony you just provided and may continue to provide with the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
All right, great, thank you. Okay.
More questions for the board? The public?
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Next, we move on to Mr. Keller for the cross-exam.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Siluski. I'm Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Nicole Dory. I'm with the law firm McConnell Foley. I'm here on behalf of Sustainable Development for Millburn Township. So, when we left off at the last hearing, we had Mr. Keller's questioning. I'd like to bring up Mr. Keller for some rebuttal testimony. I did also submit a letter to the board with a rebuttal report to Mr. Keller yesterday. Now, I apologize for the short turnaround, but I only got Mrs. Callahan's report on Monday. So, I sent a response right away and I believe that would need to be admitted as an exhibit.
I was just going to get to that, yes. Okay, so we're talking about the letter from Bowman, April 1st, 2025?
Yes, and there was also an April 1st cover letter for myself.
Okay.
And that was submitted electronically yesterday. And I also copied Mr. Levine on the email, so he should have a copy of that as well. So, I have hard copies with me. And the last number that I believe I left off at was 09. I don't know if there was another exhibit marked in the middle. Are we up to 010? Okay. So, I'll just hand out, just make sure I have a copy for myself.
Before we, to Mr. Levine, you stipulate to allowing these into the record? Maybe a cover letter?
I'm sorry, could you say that?
Do you stipulate to allowing the, the cover letter and the engineer's report into the, into the records? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have copies here and they have my letter with Mr. Keller's April 1st letter attached. So, I'll just mark both of those as exhibit 010, okay?
Can we, can we parse it out, 010 being the cover letter, 11 being his response?
Sure, I do have them stapled together, so I'm going to hand you out copies. We can mark them separately, but I did.
Great, just like to keep them separate.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Keller was previously sworn. We'll mark the first...
And his license remains in good standing?
Yes, it does.
Just making sure, thank you. Your licenses remain in good standing?
Yeah, that, they, they do too, as well.
Thank you.
So, excuse me, we're just going to mark the, my April 1st, 2025 letter will be exhibit 010 and Mr. Keller's April 1st, 2025 report will be 011.
Mr. Chair, can I state clarification?
Please.
So, I just want to make sure I understand this. Martha's report came out last Tuesday, the 25th, and you said you just received it yesterday?
On Monday.
On Monday.
Monday. Right. The April 1st. Okay. Thank you. Maybe it was the 31st on Monday. Yeah, yes. And then I, I submitted a response yesterday, which is April 1st.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Keller, I was going to ask you to speak to the buffer requirements first, but since Mrs. Callahan has presented her report mostly on stormwater, I, I just maybe change the order of things here. And I know Mrs. Callahan has, has gone over her report, but I just wanted to highlight a few items that are perhaps not addressed in your April 1st, 2025 report, which I think are mostly some items that you're responding to that Ms. Callahan disagreed with. Is that fair to say?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. There's a few items in her April 1st report that she, excuse me, her March 25th report that she did agree with you on. On the first page, she said that they needed more geotechnical test borings. Can you just generally explain to the board as an engineer, why do you install these geotechnical test borings? And why do you think, in your opinion, the board should insist on this testing being performed now and not delegated for resolution compliance?
I mean, this is the basis and the core of stormwater design. You cannot design a stormwater system without geotechnical information as to the soils. The soil composition itself is one. The water table is another. Bedrock, which they haven't found here, is another aspect of that. They had done three tests back last year in March of '24, which didn't cover all of the basins that they originally designed. When they modified the design, they did additional testing, two additional tests in January. And those two additional tests were in the western pervious pavement area. They did no testing where the sand filter is now proposed. They did no testing at all where the, what I call the southern pervious pavement area is south of the building. It's, the BMP manual, the best management practices manual, that's a technical guide that goes with the stormwater regulations established by the state at NJAC 7:8 are the guidelines. It is clear in those guidelines that you must perform two soil tests in every BMP. BMP meaning that stormwater managed facility of whatever kind that it is. It's not, oh, well, I do it in a certain area. The rules say you must do at least two and depending on the size, you may have to do more. So, if that pervious pavement system gets bigger surface area because it's in the seasonal high water table, then that area may be reached such a size that two tests are not sufficient. So, you know, there's a lot of unknowns here because they haven't followed the rules and the technical guidance on how to design a stormwater system. So, and, you know, I have no doubts about Martha's abilities to analyze that, but they haven't given you the information. And as I said at the last meeting, you know, yes, as a board engineer, municipal engineer, are, that role is to provide the board with guidance. But we don't vote. We don't make the decisions. And in my opinion, and Ms. Callahan has her, you know, she's put her position on, on the record, is that has, at this point, with the lack of information that's provided, to me, I wouldn't make that recommendation to my board that we'll deal with it in resolution compliance, not on a major development. There is so much missing information that I wouldn't do it, but that's me. But it is not, right now, what they've provided, the reports that they've submitted are not in compliance with the rules. They haven't provided the information.
Okay, and you, you spoke about the regulations, the state regulations, and those regulations are incorporated into the township's stormwater ordinance, correct?
Correct. The municipal, municipal stormwater ordinance mirrors and follows the state's. Towns are allowed to make them more restrictive, but they can't be less restrictive than what the state says. And I didn't compare it word for word, but essentially, the municipal ordinance is, you know, matches what the state says. On, on the sand filter, there was discussion about the sand filter, having an underdrain. Well, there's no soil test there. If that sand filter, which has a level bottom because the top is, matches the parking lot, it runs from, I don't know, about seven feet deep to 10 feet deep. The bottom of that with the underdrain, if that's in the water table, that has no function. It will not provide for the storage, will not provide for the water quality measures that are required. And that underdrain pipe is going to be full of water. The rules, the two soil tests that they did in the pervious pavement area on the western side of the building, under the rules, modeling of soil, and they did it during the appropriate times of year, you're, you're supposed to do it from January to April 1st. And all their tests were done in that timeframe. That, those five soil tests that they did do showed modeling of soil, which is representative of a seasonal high water table. They also found seepage in most, if not all, of those soil tests, which again, is indicative of a seasonal high water table. That system, the storm brick system, and we use it too in our designs, whether it's an infiltration system or it's a sealed system, a closed system, cannot be below the seasonal high water table. Based upon the information in their own report, those two test holes in that area show a seasonal high water table of 318. The bottom of that system is at 312. It's six feet into the water table based on their own soil records. You can't do that. That's not consistent, compliant with the regulations.
So, based on that, is it your opinion that the applicant hasn't met its burden to demonstrate compliance with the township's stormwater ordinance?
Yes, and, and I think the board can see, I feel strongly about that position. I review a lot of stormwater. I also file a lot of development plans, file a lot of plans with DEP. And I'm not, I don't think that the statements that I've made are unreasonable or inconsistent with what has to happen on any stormwater design in this state. Stormwater regulations are challenging, they're difficult, but those are the regulations that we have to follow. The state amended them in '21 to require green infrastructure and they amended them two years, almost two years ago now to add additional runoff. Yet, we now have to design for the year 2100 in addition to today's rainfall limit. And the requirements for soil testing have, you know, evolved over time as well, but they have not complied with either of those portions of the stormwater rules, in my opinion.
Okay, and you heard Mrs. Callahan's testimony that in this area, it's common to find terminal moraines, so you don't know what you're going to get even from very close distances. Did you hear that?
I did.
Swell types might change drastically. Is that right?
Yes.
So, does that highlight the importance of this geotechnical testing that Mrs. Callahan and you have suggested?
Absolutely. I mean, absolutely. As far as, I, I didn't really look at the soil logs so much for the soil type. I looked at them for seasonal high water table. You know, they're, they're, they have stated that the soils are not suitable for infiltration, but it's really irrelevant because they have a high seasonal high water table. So, you know, it, it's not, that has been the, kind of the critical element in our review is meeting compliance with separation to seasonal high water table. And, and they have not shown that they, the design complies with that.
And Mrs. Callahan's testimony, she also stated that she was repressing this additional soil testing because it may affect the design that's on the site plans. Did you hear that?
Yes.
So, is it your opinion that there's not enough information or data for this board to determine whether the, the stormwater system can function as it is actually designed on the site plans?
100%, yes.
And who makes the decision as to whether the, the site plans are compliant with the township's ordinance?
Well, I mean, that's the role of the, the board's professionals, providing guidance to the planning board, but ultimately, decision has to be made by the planning board. It's said, professionals, we don't vote. We provide you technical advice for you to make an informed decision. So, the technical compliance, and I'm not saying that there aren't certain things that can be deferred for further, you know, for review as part of resolution compliance, but this... But this is, in my opinion, far from ready for the board to act upon.
Okay, and so just one other item that Ms. Callahan agreed with you on page three of her report, item five. She agreed that the riparian buffer measurement was from the edge of the water surface instead of the top of a bank, and that this shifted the riparian zone. Did you see that?
I did.
So she agreed with you that what was depicted on the site plans as the riparian zone was actually not accurate. That's correct?
As shown on the plans, correct.
Okay, so that would also need to be revised, correct?
I, I also believe that the, it's a technical aspect of the, typically, head walls, riparian zones truncate at head walls. They, you draw a parallel line. In this particular case, the stream, as soon as it comes out of the head wall, makes a bend to the right. So if you truncate it, you're not actually getting a 50-foot riparian zone to the stream because it makes this 20, 30-degree bend, and it should be measured from that, the, parallel to the stream, the 50 feet. And in that case, it does extend into the parking lot. If it doesn't, you know, rules can't cover every instance. If, if the stream came out straight, yes, truncating it at the head wall is appropriate. In this case, the stream bends. And I, my interpretation of the rules is that you have to measure from the top of bank perpendicular to the, the stream and not necessarily where the head wall is.
Okay, and Mrs. Callahan agreed with you there, and that information is currently not on the site plans.
Correct.
She also asked for further details regarding the operation of the, the brick system and the stormwater system to ensure that it functions as it's designed. Is that something else that you would also require or recommend?
Yeah, I, I agree. It was something I brought up in my first review, is there was nothing that, they said they were using a storm brick system, but there was no information on how the pervious pavement was related to it. I had the same concern that Ms. Callahan had in, well, you know, what do you, how is this put together? And the fact that it's, has a geo-membrane around the outside of it, does make it a closed system. But again, as I said at the beginning, it doesn't matter because you can't, still can't put that, even if it's closed, you can't put it below the seasonal high water table. Rules don't permit it.
Okay, so those were just a few items that Mrs. Callahan agreed with you. And is it your opinion as to just those few items, even those, you need to, the applicant needs to submit revised site plans and stormwater management maintenance manual in order to comply with the township's ordinances?
Correct. There's, there's not enough information to ensure that a compliant stormwater system can be designed for this property without creating other zoning issues with the application. There's just not enough information.
Okay, I'll just ask you to address the other items in your April 1st report where either there's some disagreement or you're responding to some comments made by Mrs. Callahan.
Yeah. There were some technical things about the, how the stormwater calculations were prepared. I think one point where Ms. Callahan and I are not in line is about, this is clearly an urban redevelopment area, but the township ordinance, as well as the state regulations, do say if you're in a metropolitan planning area, PA1, which Milburn is, it's considered an urban redevelopment area. But when you read the definition of urban redevelopment area, one of the first things it says is that it's previously developed lands. They talked about this last time. It has to be a previously developed area to be considered an urban redevelopment area. And the,
I think number six on page four is what you're looking for.
Thank you, I'm glad you, I can tell you've heard my report then. So, the municipal ordinance clearly states, it says urban redevelopment areas, previously developed portions of areas that are delineated on the state plan policy map. The DEP's FAQ, frequently asked questions, which is in the BMP manual, clearly states that previously developed are not areas, you know, it says areas that simply have been or once have been cleared of vegetation are not, not considered previously developed if woody vegetation has been reestablished. There are areas on the western and southwestern portions of the site that are wooded. There's not maintained lawn. It is a wooded area with leaf litter on, on the ground, the same along Parsonage Hill Road and some frontage of Old Short Hills Road. Those are wooded areas. Those are not, under municipal ordinance or the state regulations, considered previously developed. That is important for two reasons. One is the way they've analyzed the runoff from the site is they've treated everything, if it wasn't a driveway or the house itself, they've treated it as, as lawn. That's not consistent. And what that does is increases the existing runoff. Wooded areas have less runoff than a maintained lawn. So that's increasing the existing runoff, which when you say you comply with the reductions, your reductions associated with what comes off under the two-year storm, if you have 20 cubic feet per second of runoff from the site today, you have to reduce that to 10. Well, and they're saying they do. But if it's, the, if you use lawn and not woods, you're getting 20. If you use woods, maybe you'd be at 15. And your reductions would have to be that much lower. Remember, they're taking out lawn area, they're taking out wooded areas, and putting in parking lots in a bigger building. Parking lots and bigger buildings have a much higher runoff than grass and even wood, and certainly of woods. So they're meeting a reduction to what I believe to be an incorrect standard.
So is it your opinion that the, what the calculations that the applicant has presented don't comply with DEP and the township's regulations and guidance?
For quantity, quantity reductions, no. And they have not addressed groundwater recharge at all. They're saying that they're exempt, and the, the municipal ordinance and the state rules don't, they're exempt for lawn areas and pavement areas and so on because that's previously developed. Wooded areas are not previously developed.
And how would they have to address storm, groundwater recharge?
Well, if, they, they would have to do the calculations to show that they comply, and that goes to soil testing. Now, the soil testing that they have done is for permeability to see where the seasonal high water table is and to determine if they can infiltrate water into the lower levels. We also raised the point that the soil survey says the booting soil is a soil group C. But based on their limited, very limited soil testing, they said, well, nothing infiltrates into the soil, so really, it's a D. You can't, the rules also define, the state regulations in the BMP manual talk about how you can change the soil classification. And it's a different type of soil test. It's much more extensive. You have to do a lot of testing throughout the entire property in the top 40 inches of the soil, not down eight feet below ground where the bottom of your stormwater management facility is. You have to do it in the upper levels. I have this burned into my head because we're dealing with this on a project of our own, where we are making the case of changing the soil type. And they have not done any soil testing that gives them the ability to say, no, it's not a soil type C, it's a soil type D. It's a completely different type of soil testing, and they haven't done any of that.
Could you talk about the, the sand filter? There's a question about the sand, sand filter. Do we know where the sand filter is going to be located?
It is on the western side of the property, closest to a, an existing residence to the west.
And the, the applicant, I, I believe, has stipulated that they're going to take the, the sand filter out of the buffer area and relocate it somewhere in the property. Do we know where that is?
No.
So they haven't depicted that on the site plans?
No.
So we don't know if that sand filter will be able to work in the location that the applicant eventually chooses?
I don't know that it works in the location, they've currently shown it on the plans because there's no soil testing. So if they put it someplace else, again, without soil testing, you can't make a determination as to whether it complies with the municipal regulations or the state's regulations.
Okay, are there any other comments in your April 1st report that you wanted to address regarding the stormwater?
Stormwater, yes. One on, on the discharge of the, the onsite stormwater management facilities in Old Short Hills Road. I agree with Ms. Callahan that the system as currently designed, assuming it works, certainly has a beneficial impact on the properties to the south. Because today, the majority of the site drains overland to the south. They're proposing to cut that off and pipe it into Old Short Hills Road. Old Short Hills Road at Park Road is the township's. I didn't realize this until somebody brought it up. I just thought it was a county road, it carries a county route marker. But from that, from Park Road south, that road is yours. They are taking their water, which they're reducing the rate of runoff, not the volume, but the rate of runoff to the design point. But now they're putting it in the street. It doesn't go there today. It eventually does. I'm not exactly sure where, I'm sure Ms. Callahan knows, because I know she's been here for quite a number of years and knows the town very well. It does eventually get into the town's stormwater system at some point, but not at Park Road. So that water that's now being proposed to be piped into the municipal storm sewer system, where it doesn't go today, they have done absolutely no analysis of those pipes to determine if those pipes have capacity for the water that they're now putting there, which doesn't go there today. So I'm not saying it couldn't be handled, but we don't know. They haven't, and if, and if those pipes can't handle it, and that water gets put into those pipes, the system's going to overflow and back up. You know, and then it becomes a township issue. As a municipal engineer, municipal engineers need another headache, like, we need a hole in the head. So they haven't analyzed it. To me, that is another significant defect in the design.
Is it your opinion that that analysis should be done now?
Yes, yes.
So I wanted to ask Mr. Keller next about the buffer requirements, but I didn't know, Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to take an opportunity to question him on stormwater, or if I should just proceed?
That kind of gets, yeah, I mean, that kind of gets into planning, yeah?
Yes, he's also a planner.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I recommend just, let's take one piece at a time, work on engineering stuff, and then come, circle back to the planning.
Brad, you, you don't have anything else to say tonight, it's just what, what Mr. Keller has to say as far as planning goes?
I mean, if, you know, there's going to be commentary related to the buffer, you know, I'm happy to respond.
Okay.
He hasn't provided any to that.
All right, so this is, let's take questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Keller from the board?
I had a question. So we've, we've heard throughout these proceedings that this is a fully conforming application. We've heard throughout these proceedings that this is a supposedly fully conforming application. In your expert professional opinion, is this indeed a fully conforming application?
You don't have the information to make that determination, in my opinion, no. To me, looking just at the stormwater and some of the, at the last meeting, I pointed out some items about the conditional use criteria. I don't think that you can call this a fully conforming application, no.
Thank you.
You mentioned two numbers with regard to the water table, I think it was 312 and 316 potentially?
312 is the bottom of it, give or take, of the storm brick system. The sand filter, this goes back to my, the sand filter is, has a bottom, a level bottom at elevation 313.25. I don't think it testified to that. I don't, I don't remember testifying to 316. I said the bottom of the storm brick system is six feet below the seasonal high water table based upon the modeling found in the soil logs.
And 312?
Is the bottom of that.
What measurement? Is that inches, feet, centimeters?
312 is elevation 312, it's feet, a feet above sea level.
And then another question I had is, you were talking about the runoff and explaining how they used grass, and there's other, there is foliage, trees and things on a park. So it sounds to me that they may have overstated the runoff?
This is under existing conditions. So having a higher existing runoff means that you only have to reduce a lesser amount? So you actually, regardless, you have to accurately calculate what the runoff is. And when, I'll try not to be too technical. What, the land cover types have different runoff coefficients. You know, basically, if you have pavement, pretty much everything runs off. If you have woods, it's a much smaller amount runs off, a lot of it is trapped and absorbed. Grass is kind of in the middle. So saying that everything's grass gives you a higher number, which helps when you're trying to meet your reductions in the proposed because you have a lot more impervious coverage, which has even more runoff. So that's why applying the correct coefficient to the wooded area is, one, it's required. And in the rules, you have to, you know, treat the ground cover based on what is there. It's not all open space and lawn. Wooded is different. So.
And then I have a related question, I guess, for Ms. Callahan to this testimony. Are you concerned that the applicant has not tested the stormwater system, the capacity of the stormwater system?
Not particularly. I, I'm offhand, I don't know the size of the pipe, but I think that it would be able to handle it because the water that's coming out of that brick system through the orifice control is not that much, it comes out very slowly. So it's not like it's a 12-inch pipe that's flowing full force, taking all the water from the site at one time. It's being throttled back through that small, one small, two and a half inch pipe. It's discharging into the system. So in my opinion, our system can handle it.
And if I recall, it's similar to testimony you've had for other projects like Annie said, and things like that.
Right, you know, I'd be happy to have Veroncy do that calculation, it's a simple calculation.
Probably helpful.
We could ask him to do that, I have no problem with that. And as I've said, I have no problem with the additional testing. So, you know, we're agreeing with that.
Right, understood. Understood. On this line, is there enough margin in the system that just reducing the size of the outlet would remedy the situation? Or is there still not enough capacity in the system?
You mean the existing municipal system?
No, I'm sorry. Before the, the brick system. So we're talking about runoff, we're going to have a certain amount now. I, I'm not certain how many, or what the wooded area, what part of the wooded area is being turned into impervious pavement, or impervious surface, sorry. So I was wondering if you knew from the drawings, or from whatever information you have, that the brick system is designed, the capacity for the brick system is designed to account for any deficiencies that you see, and that the outlet, so the release of water, the rate of water released, it would be remedied by a smaller pipe?
It, it becomes a volume issue. You know, you need to have the storage volume within the system. And I think the bigger factor affecting this is the storm brick system that they're providing with the volume, whatever, I don't recall the number, is not compliant. It's in the water table.
Right, so that's the difference. So I'm just talking about storage, because they, we've discussed now spreading it out. So if they can just spread it out with soil testing confirming everything, then the capacity is still okay, right? The volume is still okay?
Well, I mean, if they, based upon the additional soil testing that were both, you know, Ms. Callahan and I believe is critical to this, then just fix the calculations so you provide enough volume in, in your, whatever the system may be, so that you comply. You know, I mean, you gotta figure that, that whether you have a water table issue elsewhere. I think you already have a water, I know you already have a water table. They have a water table issue with the storm brick system today, at six feet below. You know, in, in, even though it's a closed system, you cannot, the rules do not permit you to put it below the water table. It's, you know, I've had DEP tell that to me directly.
Right. Understood. So then you're saying that there's not only the water table issue, but then there's potentially a volume issue, even though whatever they designed, the margin in it, it's not sufficient due to the groundwater recharging?
Yeah, I, I, not the groundwater recharge is a separate item within it, just the quantity controls. But I, I don't know whether they have, did they design it right to the, you know, meet exactly what they need in volume, or did they, you know, design it over? But it, it's too hard to tell when you have a system that just doesn't comply.
On second question, you had said a timeframe between January and April 1st for soil testing? Does that mean that this time period has already passed?
That's the recommended timeframe. You can do testing in other periods of time. And, and this becomes an issue with maybe something that has to happen at, at construction, but you're supposed to do it in that timeframe. You know, it doesn't always work. But then you have to rely upon a very detailed evaluation of the soils themselves. You know, they, they already have modeling. You know, the question is, and modeling is indicative of a seasonal high water table. If you find modeling on other areas, you have to assume that that is the seasonal high water table. So, but that could be, depending on what they find, additional soil testing would likely have to be done next, you know, springtime, January, well, January to April.
And until then, we couldn't have a definitive stormwater system then?
It, it, there would be an open question about where the seasonal high water table is, yes.
Okay. Anyone else on the board?
Can I go back to that question that I asked Ms. Callahan? Are you satisfied with the answer that we can rely on the typical expectations for the testing? Were there more stringent requirements that we need to impose? Any specifics that you want to mention for everybody's benefit in terms of what needs to be done, so there's no ambiguity?
Well, I mean, the soil testing is outlined in the BMP manual. You have, the rules state you have to do a minimum of two tests in every stormwater management facility, every BMP. You have to do at least two. Depending on the size, you may have to do more than two. You know, that's, the design engineer and the geotechnical engineer have to work together, collaboratively, to make sure that the tests are, enough tests are done, the tests are done in the right locations, and the tests are done to the correct depth. Those are all three factors that have to be done when you do soil testing. So.
Is there like a way to enforce specific criteria to make sure it's adequate coverage? Everything is done?
Well, they, you know, they provided, in their stormwater report, a map showing where the soil tests were done. They provided logs, and they provided information on the type of soils, where modeling was, where seepage was. So they provided the information, they just haven't done it in enough locations. The, I, I'm not sure that they even did permeability tests, because they found groundwater. So to, there's, you do permeability tests to determine if you can infiltrate surface runoff into the ground. Well, if you have a high water table, you can't do that. So, so there, there has, I, I don't believe that there's been any permeability tests, because there's a seasonal high water table.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm asking, maybe it makes sense to document what exactly needs to be done, so that there's no discrepancies when it's been reviewed, the actual results, so it doesn't fall short of the expectations.
It, it's all in the BMP manual. We, we all follow it.
So, this is more of just a clarification, just to be absolutely clear on what the issue is, because we have your original testimony, Mr. Ferrante's design, Martha's response, and now your response to that. Just with respect to the inadequacy of the design of the brick system, specifically that, it makes no difference whether it's sealed or not, because this was the response, the response, you know, the response to the question of whether it sits below the seasonal high water table was, well, it's sealed, so there's no infiltration. And you're asserting that it makes no difference whether it's sealed or not, it cannot be located below the seasonal high water table. And you're saying the current design has it six feet below, and that is based, just to clarify for me, because I may have missed this, that's based on what?
So the state regulations, which the municipal regulations follow, state regulations have tables, tables that define what the minimum separation is from the bottom of different kinds of BMPs to the seasonal high water table. All of them require, all of them except for wetlands, wet ponds, and certain manufactured treatment devices, all have a minimum separation of one foot, and in some cases, two feet, from the bottom of the, of the BMP to the seasonal high water table.
Positive separation, not a negative one.
Yes, right. You gotta have the bottom of the system here, and the groundwater's gotta be here. So there, the modeling in those two test pits on the west side of the building, four, TP four and five, show a seasonal high water table around, give or take, 318. And the bottom of that system is at 312.
Okay, and the bottom at 312 was part of the plan?
That's what's on the site plans today.
Okay, got it.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
So a quick question. So Ms. Callahan, do you agree then with Mr. Keller's testimony that even if it is a closed system, if it's below the high water table, it doesn't meet the rules?
It would have to be above, a foot above, even a closed system, at least a foot above.
Okay, so as it's currently proposed, does it meet the guidelines?
The way it's proposed today?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so, thank you, Dr. Keller.
If I may, that's just a question of clarification. Infiltration and recharge, I guess they're not synonymous.
Infiltration really goes to water quality. Groundwater recharge is infiltration, but it's a different component of the stormwater regulations. There's three components, quantity, water quality, and groundwater recharge. So.
Mr. Levine? Mr. Levine, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Keller.
Evening, Ms. Callahan.
Good evening, Mr. Levine.
Just a couple of things for you. I seem to recall the last.
We can share.
I've been told that being too close is intimidating, so I'll try to keep my distance.
Not to me.
Yeah, not to you, I'm sure. I seem to recall at the last hearing, you'd mentioned kind of, in kind of your concluding remarks, that more, just kind of summing up, more than anything, your biggest issue or concern as a general matter with the current state of affairs is a lack of testing, and more testing, more data needs to be gathered, more testing needs to be done.
As, as, as a basis for, yes, you know, there's other things that need to be done, but there's no point in doing them without knowing what you got in the ground.
And you do acknowledge that some testing has been done. You're just, you're saying that, not only in your opinion, but also the compliant BMPs, more testing needs to be done in additional areas?
Correct. I mean, what's been done is insufficient.
Do you agree, and I gathered from Ms. Callahan's testimony, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I gathered from her testimony, that's her opinion that testing can definitively establish some of these open variables that we've been discussing, like the soil type, C versus D? Regional mapping can be confirmed or disproved by specific testing, correct?
It, it can be, but the test, testing that has been done is, is not, yes, you can do testing of the property to confirm that it is indeed a soil group D as opposed to C. But, and, and there's a separate set of criteria in the BMP manual, and in the technical guidance as to how you do that, which is separate from testing for the specific BMPs that you're designing for.
And is the same true for conclusively determining the seasonal high water table? That testing can definitively establish that?
Yeah, that's why you do soil testing in every BMP, is, that is, you know.
And the soil logs that were submitted showed evidence of modeling that we discussed last time.
Correct.
That's an issue I had taken of seasonal high water table.
That is correct.
Is that just one of a number of issues, or is that by itself conclusive?
That's conclusive by itself.
How would that, how would you determine that modeled soil is a result of a regional seasonal high water table as opposed to just temporarily trapped or perched runoff?
You'd have to do a lot more soil testing to determine that it's, it's perched. You know, as Ms. Callahan indicated, you can dig here and go 100 feet away, and you get a different soil. You'd have to test more extensively to say, okay, I have modeling here, but I don't have it here. You know, right now, you have two tests in that western area, they both show modeling. So without, in the absence of any additional soil testing to show that there, that's perched in that one particular area, you can't make that determination. You'd have to do a lot more soil testing.
But just like, you can't make that determination based solely on the presence necessarily of the modeled soil. It might be subject to a different conclusion based on additional testing sample.
It, it could be. You'd have to do much more extensive testing of the soils to determine that there's a perched condition. And that would be, generally, when you have a perched condition, there is somewhat permeable soil, and then there's a lens of clay or a hardpan that prevents the water from seeping down into a lower level, and then you have good soils below. You know, there's no indication of that at this point from the tests that have been done.
Now, is it your understanding that all of the test pits showed modeling, modeled soil, or not all of them? Because my understanding, based on what was submitted, that not all of the test pits showed modeled soils.
So this is in the report from E2 Project Management. The report says January 23rd, 2024, so it was issued in '25, just for the record. So test hole one says modeling, 18 to 108 inches. Test hole two, modeling 12 to 24 inches, 24 to 57 inches. Test hole three, modeling 26 to 37, 41 to 70. Test hole four, modeling 20 to 32 inches. Test hole five, modeling 26 to 89.
And that's the most recent set of soil sampling, right?
Four and five were done in January this year.
And did you indicate as part of your testimony, there was also additional soil sampling that was done in support of the initial stormwater design?
Well, the first three test holes were done in March of '24. Then two more were done in January of this year.
And it sounds like both you and Ms. Callahan are in agreement that in order to comply with the BMPs, the brick block system has to have a separation from the seasonal high water table, correct?
Correct. That's the rules. I don't, I don't like them any more than anybody else does.
Under the, under those rules, and you talked about the developed urban, the planning area one.
Right.
For purposes of the exemption from groundwater recharge requirement. Is area a defined term under the stormwater regs? And what I'm, what I'm driving at, as opposed to site? My understanding is site is a defined term under the stormwater regs. Is that correct?
I'd have to look at the regulations. You know, but the, the language. Well, I quoted it in my memorandum, which, municipal ordinance has previously developed portions of areas, and the FAQ states that previously developed, when determining exemption, only includes those areas covered by paved gravel, dirt driveway, so on and so forth, and that areas where woody vegetation has been reestablished are not considered previously developed. So that would be portions of the development site. That's how it's always been applied in the, you know, in applying the regulations.
Okay, but, but what you just read does not include site, and site is a defined term under the regs, correct?
I think that's semantics. It means an area of the analysis. It, it's the area of the site in, in defining land cover.
And the last two then, while we're talking about areas and whether they were disturbed, or whether they were previously developed, or whether they're currently lawn, I think we had. we established this last time, but just to double check, you did not physically walk the subject property, correct?
I did not walk on the property. I was on the neighboring property to the west. I also reviewed aerials that clearly show what the ground cover is. I've driven by the site a number of times, but I've never walked the site.
Well, if you're looking at aerials that would presumably show a tree canopy, how can you get a feel for the ground cover underneath the wood?
We have aerial subscription service, and I always go to the February or March ones because there is no tree cover, and I can see what's underneath the ground. And it's a high-quality aerial where it clearly shows what the ground cover is.
Including leaf debris?
Yes. Even lawn areas in the wintertime have some greenness to them. Leaf litter is pure brown.
If we get into, and we can probably talk about the planning aspects and the buffer, but in terms of stormwater regs, that's all I have to know.
Deborah, please.
I'm hoping you can sort of explain this a little bit. So, my understanding is there is a difference between soil infiltration and soil permeability.
No, infiltration and permeability are interchangeable.
Okay, so.
It's a permeability rate to show, they're essentially the same thing.
It's the same thing. So if a test is done for soil permeability versus soil infiltration, they are testing the same thing?
Right. You're testing the soil for the permeability of the soil to allow water to flow through it.
Okay, then my question is answered. Okay.
You're welcome.
Are there any members of the public who have a question? Mr. Keller?
Please, sir. Yeah, name and address one more time, please.
Etai Harl, E.T.A.I.H.A.R.E.L., 45 Woodfield Drive.
Thanks, sir.
I just wanted to get back to the question about seasonal high-water tables, since it's a major issue.
Right.
You keep on referring to the seasonal high-water table based on the elevations that the modeling was found, right?
As one of the indicators.
As one of the indicators.
Right. They also identify that there was seepage in almost all of the test holes.
Okay, so the modeling that you refer to, and as he questioned, Mr. Levine, isn't always due to a seasonal high-water table?
It doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be.
But there's nothing else that's been provided. And with the, it said there's seepage in all of the test holes except for one. So seepage, and in the seepage, is it not all at one level? It's throughout the soil profile? So between the modeling and the seepage, the modeling, to me, and under the rules, is a marker that you have a seasonal high-water table that's very shallow.
It's a marker of a seasonal high-water table?
It's an indication. Yes, it's an indicator.
Can clay soils, existence of clay soil, result in modeling? Just your opinion, does clay soil often?
It depends. I mean, you know, and I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but the soil profiles that are provided are all various types of loamy soils. There is, there might be clay, but there's nothing.
There may be clay in the, because I mean.
But every one of the soil logs shows that it's a sandy loam, sometimes a clay loam, but the presence of clay by itself does not necessarily mean that you would be indicative of modeling.
But it could be, no more than the seasonal high-water table.
It's a different marker.
It's just a different marker, but I'm just saying it's not definitive, because I hear you.
No, it is. This, the modeling of the soil in these soils is, in my opinion, definitive of a seasonal high-water table. That's what the rules say.
You're saying it's in your opinion, is it or isn't it? I just.
Well, it's what the rules say.
Well, is it what the rules, but you're saying it's in your opinion.
And, yes. As an expert, I interpret the rules. So, and the rules say if you have modeling in the soil, absent any other indication that that modeling is caused by something else, then you must consider it to be a seasonal high-water table.
Right, because I heard Martha say that, you know, Short Hills, and I know from experience, is known for having a tremendous amount of clay in the soil.
It's not shown in the soil logs that they did.
So if there's testing done, further tests done, and you see that there is clay in the soil, then it could be due to that as well?
Well, you have to depend on what you find, and that's up to the geotechnical engineer to determine, you know, what that, I can't opine on something that I haven't seen. You're welcome.
In your experience, with this type of soil that we're looking at on the site, do you, what type of a stormwater management system would you expect would be one that you might design for this, since you give a lot of experience with this?
I mean, you know, this type of condition generally is better suited to an underdrained bioretention basin, you know, a surface basin.
A surface basin.
Yeah, which, you know, are not the surface basins when we were younger and, you know, under different rules, which were big, open grasslands. Now, everything, with the green infrastructure requirements, all these basins are planted. So it's not, oh, look, there's a detention basin. You don't get that anymore with bioretention basins. And bioretention basins are effective with seasonal high-water table. Again, you got to meet the separation.
Right.
And you have to, you know, figure out where on site that you can put this. From what I, you know, I can't opine on this because there's such limited soil data, but, you know, I would think that a surface basin would be more appropriate, along with previous pavement. You know, previous pavement is, you know, would also be effective because you create that stone bed, and the previous pavement system is fairly shallow. But it becomes an area, and I think I was asked this at the last meeting. I said, it's possible that there's just too much development on this property to provide an adequate stormwater system. Not that you couldn't develop it, but that there's not enough land left to put basins in.
Okay. So they, but they could conceivably cover both parking lots with previous paving and have a shallower system, and that it could be something like, there are a number of ways to do it, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
If you goes back to the drawing board, with the soil testing done, you could come up with a different system that would be acceptable.
There are a lot of different options in the design toolbox on how to do it. Whether it works with the soil conditions, you know, is unknown at this point. I mean, if you did something like that, if the whole parking lot was previous pavement, you'd have to do a lot more soil testing. Because the bigger, the bigger the area, it's not just two tests. You know, I forget the thresholds. You know, I don't memorize the whole BMP manual. But when you reach a certain size, you have to do more soil testing. So you have to test a lot more of the property to determine the bigger the system gets or if you're putting it into a different location.
I also wanted to ask, from my view, and I've walked the site a number of times, it's the periphery of the site that is basically the wooded areas. So the southern end of the site, where no disturbance will be done, all along Old Short Hills Road, there are, you know, quod growth trees, old growth trees maybe. And up in the northeast corner, a parsonage in Old Short. That corner is wooded, but there's no development that's proposed anywhere close to that, so.
It's, it's two things. One is just the fact that in doing the existing runoff calculations, they have not accounted for the, those areas as wooded. So they're overstating the existing runoff. It's a higher value than it should be. And I agree, a lot of it is at the perimeter. They're moving the driveway, so there's some disturbance where the new driveway will be to a parsonage hill road. I forget if it's, there's utilities or something that go out to Old Short Hills Road. There's a, I overlaid their plan onto an aerial. And there's an area on Old Short Hills Road where they're disturbing that area. But the southwestern portion of the parking lot extends into a wooded area that is, I think part of it is in the riparian zone, but even beyond that, there are wooded areas in that southwestern corner where the parking lot is going. So they are disturbing those areas with wooded, existing wooded areas and putting a parking lot in.
Do you agree that this is not, that open drainage channel is not state-regulated waters?
Based on your information? What I had gone by was their original report had a stream stats reported.
Right.
And I had done that as well. And I just went, well, they have it. I got the exact same number that they did, so I'm like, okay. And then I noticed in the second report, I think I indicated this at the last meeting, that it wasn't there, but they never discussed why. So I didn't have any information in, you know.
So do you, since we kind of agree it's not a state-regulated water, it's.
From a flood hazard perspective.
Right, there's no associated flood payment.
Correct. That I agree with, which is why I didn't comment on that again. But regardless.
But you still intend that there's a riparian buffer to it?
The riparian buffer can, it has defined bed and banks. And that's what the regulations say. Regardless of the drainage area to this, if you have defined bed and banks, which the topo shows, I've looked over the fence from the neighbor's property at that, there's defined bed and banks, it has a riparian zone.
The way I measured it, parking lot was just outside that extended when we moved the, where they started at the top of bank and extended out 50 feet, that parking lot was outside the zone, the way I saw it, so.
Okay. I measured it differently, because I didn't truncate it fully at the head wall because of.
Any other questions for the public?
I'm sorry, just one follow-up, just briefly, one question. I apologize for the guy, this is the first time. And it ties into what you were explaining about your Google Earth views of the site. Do you recall that on the plans in the southwest corner that Ms. Callahan was just talking about, the plans show some existing improvements in that area along that water course, including like an old fieldstone patio and some stairs and some retaining walls in that general area?
Very, it shows on the plans, yes.
And did that show up on the Google Earth view that you did of the site?
Well, one, I don't use Google Earth. We have a subscription service called Near Map.
Okay, thanks.
So it did show that, but it shows everything around it as wooded. And I also, from the neighbor's property, because that's fairly close to the neighbor's property, I could see that. I didn't go onto the property, I didn't have permission, so I looked at it over the fence, but it confirmed what I saw on the near map aerial.
But that's obviously previously disturbed, previously developed area. So at least that portion of what you're contending is wooded and undisturbed.
Where the patio itself is and the walls, yes, that would be considered previously disturbed. But everything around it is not considered previously disturbed because it's woods.
What about like the head, the stormwater features that are existing, the head walls, for instance, also obviously evidence of previous disturbance, correct?
But it's in a wooded area, so that does not qualify, that does not provide the exemption because it runs through a wooded area.
Was it sometimes the case if you have a developed, I mean, presumably if somebody was using that patio area and the steps that, you know, it was open at one point, over the years, if that becomes overgrown, does that then become a wooded area?
Yes, under the rules, and the rules, I'm going to look one more time, because I know I had it in my file here. I don't, I printed out the, and this is right from the DEP regulations under the FAQ, which they rely upon, and it clearly states that the emergence or the existence of woody vegetation, I don't know where it is, is not considered previously developed, even in an urban redevelopment area. It's black and white.
Okay, Mr. Keller, yep, you can put your.
Slating hat.
Down the story.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Apologize.
Just a quick one. So just want to clarify for myself.
Name and address real quick.
Natalia Castrina, and my address is 20 Park Road.
Thank you.
So neighbor, very concerned about flood hazard. So do I understand correctly that the stormwater management system of the applicants doesn't conform with seasonal high-water number?
It doesn't provide the required separation to seasonal high-water table, correct?
Okay, so it's correct. So that makes, just that thing alone makes this application non-conforming, correct?
It's not compliant with municipal stormwater regulations, correct?
Okay, so it's not conforming. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Keller, so we, I just want to go back to my April 1 letter, we marked that as O10, and then your report you just spoke about, your April 1 report we marked as O11, and that dealt primarily with stormwater, but you did have a section there regarding compliance with the buffer requirements for the application, so I want to ask you about that.
Sure.
So the first item in your report was about compliance with the conditional use requirement for a buffer, and your report addressed several additional sections of the township's ordinances that discuss buffers, in addition to those you mentioned last time, right?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, and in my April 1 letter, I also identified a few tenants of ordinance interpretation. So you reviewed my April 1 letter?
I did.
Okay, and just to briefly summarize, the first was consider the nature of the subject matter of an ordinance to determine its fundamental purpose, reading other ordinances on the same subject in pari materia, which is Latin, on the same subject.
I think you're worth that.
Okay, and they must be read together and considered together, and to give words their ordinary meaning. So are you familiar with those constructs of ordinance interpretation generally?
In general terms, yes.
Okay, so keeping those in mind, can you please further explain your opinion regarding the application of Section 609.3 of the township's ordinances to this conditional use application?
Certainly. I will repeat my testimony from the last time. You know, you've heard of my position, that section talks about buffers. Yes, there's one sentence that talks about various non-residential zones, but it also talks about multifamily residential. However, in further looking into this, and one of the board members brought this up at the last meeting, who went back and looked at it, in Chapter 516, which is a section in the zoning ordinance about off-street parking and loading, specifically DRZ 516.3 is entitled buffers. And there's also a section, DRZ-516.8 landscaping. Now, the 516.3 specifically states, and this 516.3 is prefaced by saying that this applies is prefaced by saying that this applies to all properties that require site plan approval. I'm paraphrasing that, I didn't read the specific language. I did read the specific language, but. It says, "All loading areas in parking lots shall be buffered from adjoining streets, existing residential use in residential zoning districts in accordance with section 609.3 buffers."
And there's no exemption in chapter 516 for.
No, it doesn't say, you know, it only applies in this zone or that zone. It says, it, parking lots must be buffered from existing residential uses in accordance with 609.3. So that's the township ordinance. And putting that along with the conditional use standard, which says that there must be a 25-foot buffer to a residential use. Plus this leads you to 609.3, which talks specifically about what a buffer is. And we had a lot of discussion the last time, again, I won't repeat it. A buffer is not just a setback. When I was on the adjoining residential property before the last meeting, you know, the applicant's attorneys stipulated that they'll maintain in, in, in the existing fence, which is today in questionable shape, portions of it have fallen down. The, the, the issue with that fence is that the residential property is higher, the parking lot at its proposed elevation is higher, and the fence sits down in a gully. It provides absolutely zero shielding because the other part of 609.3 talks about preventing headlight glare. That fence does nothing. If you can, standing in the backyard of the house next door, standing inside the living room, you look right over the fence. The fence where it is does absolutely nothing. And yes, there's existing vegetation there, but most of it is deciduous or is limbed up. There are some evergreens, but not a lot. And they, again, don't provide a buffer. Section 516.8, the landscaping talks, states, "A majority of the parking area shall be obscured from public streets and adjoining residential properties by buildings, landscape berms, natural ground elevations, low evergreens or plantings, singularly or in combination." The plant material that, and I don't believe that I stated that there was nothing being proposed, but that it was insufficient and it was of such a height and type that it would not provide the requirements as set forth in section 516.3 and 516.8 to provide the required buffer that is a standard in the conditional use. So the plan, in my opinion, as submitted to the board, does not meet that standard. It does not meet 516.3, 516.8, which brings in 609.3 about how that buffer is to be constituted. It's only 25 feet wide because that's the standard in the conditional use. Not 50, which is the, in 609.3, but there's still a 25-foot buffer and it doesn't comply with the section 516.3 and point eight that apply to any property, no matter where, under those particular circumstances that I already read. So having a fence in its current location does nothing. And the proposed plant material is not sufficient to provide a buffer between a parking lot and the residential home next door.
Just to clarify, section 516.3 specifically incorporates the requirements of section 609.3 regarding buffers for loading and parking lots to make sure those areas are buffered in accordance with 609.3, correct?
Correct, it specifically and explicitly states that the buffer is to be in accordance with section 609.3.
And that's for all site plan applications in the township, correct? And sections DRZ 5.16.8 has additional language requiring landscaping to obscure residences using natural landscape berms, natural ground elevations, and low evergreens or plantings singularly or in combinations, correct?
Correct.
And that does not actually refer to section 609.3. It has its own requirements regarding landscaping, is that right?
That is correct.
So based on your review of the sections of the township's ordinance requiring buffering, the conditional, specific conditional use requirement in sections 606.2 D1J, as well as the specific requirements for buffers in section 609.3, and also looking at the, the chapter 516 regarding the standards for off-street parking and loading throughout the township in sections 5.16, 516.3 and 516.8. Is it your professional opinion that the application is required to comply with the buffer requirements in those sections of the ordinance?
Yes, they do.
And is it your professional opinion based upon a review of the landscape plans submitted by the applicant, as well as an inspection of the site, that the proposed landscaping on the western border does not comply with these sections of the township's ordinance?
Yes, that's my opinion, yes.
You've heard the testimony of the applicant's witnesses. There was a couple of stipulations that Mr. Levine made at the beginning of the hearing that he would work with the township's forester, I believe, and potentially some of the neighbors. Is it your professional opinion that the adequacy of the buffer is something that needs to be addressed on the site plans and addressed now instead of it during resolution compliance?
I, I do believe it should be addressed. It should be part of the deliberations of the planning board.
And is that because it's a, a fundamental to the board's jurisdiction over this application? Since a conditional use requirement to have an adequate buffer?
That is, that's part of it, that's a big part of it. And also, I mean, I think that is a key element of making sure that the site plan conforms with the township requirements.
And is it your opinion that the, the board is, must deny the application and refer to the zoning board for a conditional use variance if it doesn't provide an adequate buffer in accordance with the township's ordinance?
They don't, if, if the, that condition of the conditional use standards is not met because the buffer does not meet the criteria set forth in the township ordinance, this board doesn't have jurisdiction. You know, the only way the board has jurisdiction over conditional use is if all the conditions of that conditional use are satisfied. If they don't, if even one is not met, this board does not have jurisdiction. And it becomes a zoning board.
And I believe you heard the testimony of the applicant's planner, Mr. Rizzo. And he referred to a buffer and a setback being synonymous, do you remember that?
Yes, I do. I'll think about that for a second.
Okay, and, and in my, my letter to the board on page three included, while there is no definition of buffer in the township's ordinances, there is a, a definition for setback in section DRZ 301, and I'm just gonna read that definition to you. It says, "Setback is the distance between a street or line or lot line and that portion of the lot where the structures are located. Based upon the setback requirements of this ordinance, all setbacks from public streets shall be measured from the proposed right of way or shown on the official tax map. Roof hang, overhangs may project to a maximum of two feet beyond a required setback line as otherwise provided in this ordinance." Based upon your review of that definition, do you think that the, the term buffer is synonymous with a setback and the township's ordinances?
No, not at all. A setback is purely a dimension, a physical distance that some structure used has to be set back from the property. A buffer is clearly in, in its, while there's no definition in the township ordinance between all the different, between 516.3 and 609.3, it's clear that a buffer is to be planted with a variety of different plant material. And that's the purpose. A buffer in 516.8 also talks about it, of having, of the landscaping. Point of the buffer is to provide screening. Township uses the word obscure between a residential use and a parking lot. That's much different than a setback, which is just, well, it, it can't be here, it's gotta be over there. That's all that a setback is. Setback and buffer are completely different. The only similarity in any kind of way is that a, the buffer in the conditional use standards is established as a distance of 25 feet. But we're talking about what is in that 25 feet as opposed to a setback, which is just, well, it's gotta be 25 feet wide. So the buffer is much more restrictive and is not synonymous with a, a buffer and setback are not synonymous terms.
Okay, and you've heard the testimony of some other professionals who have disagreed with the application of section 609.3. You know, leaving aside your interpretation, you know, even if you took this very narrow interpretation of the ordinance and, and only looked at the introductory section of section 609.3, is it your opinion that the, the planning board and the board's professionals should still look to these other sections of the township's ordinance to determine what should be within the buffer that's a conditional use requirement in subsection J?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, 516.3 clearly refers to 609.3. So I think just in reading the 516 sections about landscaping and buffers is guidance as to what should be in there. And it specifically references to 609.3. Putting aside, you know, a sentence in 609.3, I think the rest of that ordinance is applicable based on the rest of the municipal ordinance.
Okay, so it's your opinion that the applicant should provide a conforming site plan that provides a 25-foot buffer in conformance with these township ordinances?
Yes, they do.
And if they do not, then the application has to be referred to the zoning board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, no further direct questions for Mr. Keller on this subject.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah, I have a question. So would it be fair to say that with the town ordinances as they're currently written concerning buffers, irrespective of the intent of the author, is it your professional opinion that the buffers in 609.3 should apply? And if so, are the, what's currently proposed conforming or not?
So yes, I believe 609.3 should apply because it's referenced specifically in 516.3. And the plan as currently configured, they don't provide a 25-foot wide buffer because they have a sand filter and a vegetative filter strip, which, I'm not objecting to the fact that they're there, it's that the presence of those do not allow plantings to create the screening that is required in 516.3 and, and 516.8. So, you know, so the plan as currently before the board does not comply.
And in your professional opinion then, is the remedy for this to be referred to the zoning board? Or are there changes that can be made to the design so that they can provide the necessary buffer? And be in compliance?
Purely from an engineering and planning perspective, if you remove the sand filter, the vegetative filter strip from that area and plant that area, put a berm in, however you do it, yes, then you would be in compliance with the conditional use standards. That then, you know, dominoes into, well, now you've taken out a portion of the stormwater facilities. Can you then comply with the stormwater design, which I won't get back into, we spent enough time on that? So the short answer is yes, they could redesign the site to provide the buffer and keep it before the planning board. If they don't, then you don't have, in my opinion, you don't have jurisdiction.
Corey? So if I'm hearing you correct, you're saying that 609.3 comes in because 516.3, it says buffers, says, "All loading areas of parking lot shall be buffered from adjoining streets existing residential use and residential zoning districts in accordance with section 609.3."
Correct.
But you also seemingly said, hey, let's disregard the sentence in 609.3 that says, this applies to these particular zones.
I, I didn't say to disregard it. I said, you don't look at just that one sentence. That one sentence is saying that, why they crafted it that way? That part of the ordinance was amended in 2022 to change the construct of that. But 516.3 clearly states that the buffer has to meet the, the requirements of 609.3. Not to width, not to, you know, as to the construction of it, as to providing the screening that is stated in 516.3, and it says, "You must screen a parking lot."
That's assuming, that's assuming the, the specific limitations in the preamble doesn't apply.
Well, 516 has, states in the introductory paragraph, I stated in my letter, it, it applies to all site plan applications. Introductory paragraph of chapter 516.
Yeah, no, we're getting 516 right here. It says, "In accordance with 609.3."
But it says at the start that all side applications have to satisfy 516.3. So it's almost, it's almost contradictory. 609.3 says this subset have to satisfy this. 516.3 says, "Everybody has to satisfy this thing over here."
With respect to parking and loading.
516 says, "Everything that require a site plan approval."
Right.
These require.
No, no, I agree, that's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is though, it's like, it has to satisfy this other thing that says it only applies to a subset, right? So I think it's contradictory, and I think it's contradictory because they were written at different times. I think the intent was that it would satisfy 609.3. But now it's, it's not written exactly that way.
Let me reframe it this way. Say this particular application was not next to a single-family home, but it was next to a commercial building. Well, then 516.3 buffers wouldn't apply to screening the parking lot because it's not next to a residential use, assuming that the commercial building is not in a residential zone. It wouldn't apply. So, but you would then go to 609.3 and say, well, if I'm in this zone and next to this use, then it would apply. In this case, it specifically states adjacent to an existing residential use. So it's a fact of, this applies in all circumstances for all applications that need site plan approval. If it's next to a public street, if it's next to a residential use, or it's next to a residential zone. So if it's not next to one of those three things, then this section doesn't apply and you wouldn't go to 609.3. 609.3 stands on its own as far as that first sentence of where it applies in those specific zoning districts as it abuts residential use to multifamily, so on and so forth. So that's, it is a little convoluted, but I think it's, to me, it's clear that because of 516.3 and that the adjacent use is residential, 609.3 applies.
And, and just a follow-up question to that. And 516.8 has its own subset of requirements for buffering irrespective of 609.3.
Correct, which also says, "A majority of the parking area shall be obscured from public streets and adjoining residential properties."
So putting aside for a second, the, the. So putting aside for a second, the, the arguable inconsistency in the regulations, based on the question you did, there, even if we agree for argument's sake that, that there is some buffering that's required as defined by 609.3 with specificity, is this site incapable of meeting that definition?
No, it's, Mr. Sukamandi asked me, yes, they could redesign the site to provide a 25-foot buffer. But that has, you know, impacts as to stormwater, possibly to parking, to, to comply with. So physically, yes. Can they put a 25-foot buffer between the parking lot, between the residential property line and the parking lot? Yes. The plans don't currently show that.
So would, would it be fair to say that there's ambiguity and lack of clarity in these ordinances? And if so, is it within the power of the planning board to interpret these buffer-related ordinances and ultimately decide if the buffer should apply? Is that within the purview of this planning board?
Well, I mean, I made a statement, I think it's a kind of a legal argument, so I'll address it. But I did make a statement in my, my cover letter that, you know, it's within the Harretts jurisdiction of this board to interpret its own ordinances as part of a pending application. So this is a, an interpretation issue that's been presented to the board. It's part of a conditional use requirement. So I think it goes to the fundamental jurisdiction of the planning board. And I think it needs to be addressed by the planning board and demonstrated on the site plans for the reasons we've stated. So, yeah, I'd say that it's within the board's power to interpret its own ordinance. These are the sections that we're asking you to look at.
So I'm just going to assume for argument's sake that 609.3 applies now. You had expressed a concern that the fence is not sufficient, even if repaired, because of height of the house and topography and things like that.
Correct.
How would you, as a, as an engineer, propose rectifying?
The, the, it needs to be put closer to the parking lot at a higher elevation so that it would be a closer to the cars, provide a more effective screen. 609.3 also talks about putting plant material between the property line and any fence. So it would be much more effective to put the fence near the parking lot and then to provide a buffer area, planted area between that fence and the residential property. Creates a much more appropriate setting for, you know, for the residential. You know, when you have, I don't want to say incompatible, if you have differing intensity uses next to each other, the higher intensity use should provide the screening and the buffering to the lower intensity use, in this case, the residential, so that they're being provided with more natural buffer. And then the fence would be more effective, should be, and is more commercial in character, should be closer to their, to the parking lot.
Any other questions for the board?
So, and to be clear, you know, if they were to put a taller fence close to the parking lot and they were to put plantings in the buffer area, are they even able to put plantings in the buffer area because of the stormwater management features?
You can't plant in a sand filter. And you really can't plant in a vegetative filter.
Would it be fair to say there'd be substantial adjustments that would need to be made to this plan in order for it to be fully conforming?
Yes. If, if that BMP is even feasible pending soil testing.
Graham, can I put you on the spot? Are you able to address this? Or I know we received this just yesterday.
Yeah. And I actually received it this morning, so I actually haven't had the benefit of a long review. I do have a couple of comments prepared that I'm happy to kind of walk through just based on prior testimony from a primary income, just to kind of take this issue back a little bit. So I'm happy to share those initial thoughts. And I can probably expound upon this a little bit more at the next meeting. So, but.
Please.
Good evening, everyone. Graham Pedo here as board planner this evening. I did just want to take a step back because I.
Graham, real quick, you were sworn in previously?
I have been sworn in previously, but.
Let's do it again, just so we say. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, the best we have got.
I do.
Great, please proceed, thank you.
So I do just want to kind of take a step back and clarify the conditional use approval for the board a little bit, just to provide a little bit of additional context. The applicant in this case is seeking two sets of, two different approvals, distinct approvals from this board. The first is a conditional use approval, and the second is preliminary and final site plan approval. And I think it's important for us to take a look at the municipal land use law with respect to conditional uses and the, the section that, that talks about that. It's NJSA 40:55D-67A, which discusses conditional uses of the municipal land use law and states as follows. "A zoning ordinance may provide for conditional uses to be granted by the planning board according to definite specifications and standards which shall be clearly set forth with the sufficient certainty and definiteness to enable the developer to know their limit and extent. Planning board shall grant or deny an application for a conditional use." The 95 days' mission, the application kind of finishes out. So in this case, strict compliance with the 12 conditional use standards as provided with definite specifications and standards set forth with sufficient certainty and definiteness in DRZ 606.2.D.1 is required for the board to grant conditional use approval. In this case regarding the buffer, the conditional use standard is only defined with the specification as stated in J, "The minimum buffer to a residential use or zone shall be 25 feet." Other potentially related ordinance requirements, as indicated by Mr. Keller, are not applicable in this case to the conditional use approval section of board's jurisdiction as they are not provided within DRZ 606.2.D.1 with definite specification and standard. Again, we lack this clarity that we've all kind of talked about. There is nothing that says what the buffer is, what it constitutes, within the conditional use standards. So I think, given this characterization of how the municipal land use law situates it, I don't believe that a D3 variance should be warranted if the applicant complies with the dimensional standard of 25 feet for the buffer as the conditional use standards lack any other detail as far as what that buffer is to include. Now that, that, so that, and then to the second point that Mr. Keller raised regarding the requirements of DRZ 516.3, that section may be considered to apply, you know, but obviously there is a lack of consistency as indicated by Mr. Biller, we have some contrasting language. But I just wanted to note that DRZ 516.3, that section of the code, the site design standards of the 500 sections of the DRZ, those are characterized as site design standards and relieve or deviations from those requirements are considered a design waiver or an exception to site plan, site design standards. And they don't rise to the level of a variance or granting a variance. And that's, that's pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-51. So I think that's an important distinction for the board to kind of consider in the, in this framework approach that, you know, should the buffer standards of 516.3 apply or, you know, the board, you know, feels that, that those requirements should be applied in this case, that would really be a site design component or a site plan component for review. The conditional use approval is really related to the 12 conditions as stated consistent with the, with the language presented in the municipal land use law.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the, the 12 conditions, I mean, you're, I'll put words into your mouth, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. You're implying that they stand alone, that don't need to be read in the context of the rest of the ordinances. But that clearly isn't true, right? I mean, we have definitions elsewhere that we're relying on in that section. So we do go outside that list of 12 in order to determine what they mean. You're implying that we can't go, first of all, I completely agree that, that we have to go to 516 to try and figure out what buffer means. You have to go to 516.3, then jump back to 609, no, 516, yeah, jump back to 609.3. And it's very circuitous and tough for anybody to figure that out. So I agree with that. However, it doesn't seem to be the case that we can't go outside those 12 conditions as stated. We do look to the rest of the ordinances, at least for definitions of the terms in there, presumably other things, so, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the definite, presented, the standard is "The minimum buffer to a residential zone, user zone shall be 25 feet." It's providing a definitional standard. It's not providing what it shall consist of, what, if there's fencing to be included or not. It's just saying that the buffer has a minimum distance of 25 feet. So I think that's kind of the lack of.
Understand what those terms in those conditional uses mean. We do look to the ordinance, what a frontage means, for example.
Sure, sure, and those terms are defined, frontage is a defined term.
Even if they're not defined, it doesn't seem like it's forbidden under the language you described in the statute for us to go further in the ordinances. And I agree, we're going a long way from 516.3 and then back to 609.3, but that's the only thing we have.
And, and I think that's just my professional caution, I think, to the board is that, you know, in, in the absence of a defined term for buffer, I think that we should be cautious in considering that if this rises to the level of a conditional use deviation or conditional use variance, and really focus on what the language says. Because as it says in the municipal land use law, that the, the conditional uses to be granted by the board "according to definite specifications and standards which shall be clearly set forth with sufficient certainty and definiteness to enable the developer to know their limit or extent." It needs to be contained within the conditional use standard language. So I think that's, that's just where we need to be careful. And that's just my professional guidance in, in kind of reviewing these standards in context of Mr. Keller's commentary.
So then, are you saying it's your professional opinion that, you know, even, even though there is ambiguity here, that it's ultimately up to the planning board to make that decision? This doesn't need to go to the zoning board?
I, I think if the dimensional standard of 25 feet for the buffer is achieved by the application, then it complies with the conditional use standard as set forth within the ordinance. I think separate and apart from that, if the board feels that 516.3 and its related reference to 609.3 may apply in this case, those are things that can be discussed or, you know, evaluated for their conformance in review of the application. But I don't think that it rises to the level of a conditional use variance necessitating a transfer jurisdiction to the application.
So basically, it's up to this board to decide whether those, well, buffers apply.
Well.
To me, I'm hearing that what you're saying is it's not a threshold issue, meaning that we don't have jurisdiction, but it is a potential issue on whether we, for site plan approval. So what you're saying is if the application is in the right place, but then we, it's up to us to decide whether the plan gets approved.
I will caveat that, just to say it is in the right place as long as that 25-foot space is maintained.
Right.
So in your professional opinion, and plain English, what does mean a buffer for you?
You're going to write the definition for buffer that everybody wants in the ordinance right now on the spot.
So what is the meaning of a buffer?
I think based on the language that's contained in other sections, I think that a buffer is, you know, an area that constitutes a combination of elements such as plantings or fencing or other screening techniques to shield one use from an adjacent use, I think is really kind of what we're trying to define or the definitional term that we're lacking here. And I think that, you know, just as Mr. Baxter was indicating, there is reference to those features in other sections. We, we kind of lack that language with specificity as it relates to the conditional use standards here in this case. And I will also say that, you know, as presented on the plans by the applicant, and, you know, fortunately, we don't have the benefit of Mr. Ferranti to talk specifically about the design approach here, but that space does include plantings. It includes new proposed plantings and retention of existing plantings and a fence. You know, so those features are present. I guess the question that the board really has to consider is, does that rise to the level for consistency with 516.3? And does 516.3 even really apply in this case, given kind of this circular reference issue that we have?
So I want to keep with the screening. So do you think that what they presented is enough screening for the neighbors with the parking? The neighbors next to this property? Will see the parking lot or they will not see the parking lot?
I, I think that there have been representations made by both the applicant and the applicant's engineer in prior testimony that they can consent to plant more trees or, you know, I believe that Mr. Ferranti even, and, you know, I believe there was a mention that the sand filter could be adjusted and, you know, perhaps additional screening could be planted. There's been assertions that the fence will be maintained or, you know, repaired. I think given kind of the uncertainty of how those elements will be treated with finality on an updated plan with, as Mr. Lemine indicated, you know, references on the plan that say fence to be maintained or additional, you know, screen, or repaired, where those additional screenings that have been referenced are going to be located, I can't comment to the degree of screening that's proposed because there's been some assertions or some comments related to addition to that space that we haven't seen yet on the final plan.
So just to be clear, you are distinguishing between setback and buffer? That they, there are differences between setback and buffer?
Yes, I would say it there.
No, to continue that question, so where does the buffer end now as it resides on the site plan? So we have the parking lot, which is, I believe, where 25 feet is measured from, then the sand filter. So if it's the setback, right, to the parking lot, or if that's considered the buffer, where did you define that the sand filter is not like part of a buffer?
Well, I think that that is, that, you know, that, that's something that the board has to consider. I, I again wish we had the benefit of Mr. Ferranti to kind of walk us through the, the relationship of these elements within the buffer area and also to provide context as to what can happen atop the sand filter. You know, I know Mr. Keller just made some assertions as to what can and can't happen. I'm not a stormwater engineer, I don't know what can be planted on top of the sand filter or not. So I think that the board would benefit from some updated information as it relates to those elements on the site plan with further delineation. And, you know, and further into that point, I think that it is important for the board to receive an updated and revised plant set in advance of final approval in this application case. And there is case law that does set this, it's CBS Outdoor Incorporated versus Lebanon Planning Board, uh, Planning Board Board of Adjustment, whereby the Board of Adjustment really cannot condition an approval on a conditional use standard. You can't accept a promise from the applicant that they will comply with the conditional use standard, such as the 25-foot dimensional requirement. You have to see that in advance of the approval so that we know that that standard is to be met and achieved. And you can't let that standard go and be part of a, a final resolution compliance process. That makes sense.
Can you just say that again?
Sure, sure. I actually have the, I have the exact reference from the, from the case. So in this case, the court explained that a promise from the applicant about its future potential compliance with the conditional use standard or specification is not permitted. So you need to receive a copy of the plan that complies with the conditional use standard in advance of rendering your final decision on the application.
So then, if that's the case, the promises from the applicant to adhere to something in the future that's not on the plans in front of us, that's not sufficient?
So I want to just make a distinction on that. This, this case law provision is just related to the 12 conditional use standards set forth for houses of worship.
Can you, what was the case?
CBS Outdoor Incorporated versus Lebanon Planning Borough Board of Adjustment.
So in the previous meeting, you, you've said that you didn't think 609.3 applied because of that, given what we've learned since then. Do you still feel that way or have you changed your view?
I, I do still feel that way. I think that the opening sentence of 609.3, as Mr. Biller indicated, does, does not make this section applicable. But all that to be said, you know, this is a site plan application. The board can certainly discuss, you know, what the applicant is proposing in this landscape area. There is a fence to be maintained slash prepared. It would, it would be good for the board to have information about that on a final site plan as well. And I think clarifying, specifically clarifying the dimensionality of this buffer area on the site plan is a necessity in advance of rendering any approval.
So you still feel that the reference from, I don't have the numbers up front, but from 516.
516.3.
Yeah, to, that does not automatically make 60, you know, 603 whatever.
It's, it's, it's an odd characterization. It says, you know, to, I don't have the language here. 516.3 says, "All loading areas and parking lots shall be buffered from adjoining streets existing residential uses and residential zone districts in accordance with 609.3." So, but the first opening sentence of 609.3 says, "All of these conditions must be met before you proceed to the following." So in, in my read, you know, it's, it's a deficiency in the ordinance and that, that section would not apply.
So, so can you read says 516, 516, can you read that one?
Read it again.
No, 516, not 516.3.
Oh, I don't have the, I don't have the opening sentence for 516.
The standard set forth in this section, the standard set forth in this section applied only to uses requiring site plan approval unless otherwise stated.
So that's the opening of what is following.
Yes, but then it gets narrowed. So it says, "The standards in this section only apply to site plan approval." Okay, fine. So then you go to 6, 516.13 and it says, "In accordance with 609." And then 609 narrows it even further arguably by having the conclusion.
But I would like to make a point about that because if you look at the. But I would like to make a point about that, because if you look at the ordinance numbers, this was written in 1987 of street parking, and 609.3 was written much more recently than that, I think, a few years ago. So I can imagine a situation where it was intended to apply without those extra conditions. We have to go back and look at the history of how 609.3 necessarily changed.
Well, I, I, so and, and to expand upon that point, I can advise that 609.3 was most recently, um, updated to incorporate the, uh, additional B2 zones that were part of the affordable housing compliance overlay process. I don't know about prior to that point, um, but that most recent edit is to add those zone districts to that section, so.
And just for the sake of argument, if 609.3 was edited most recently, then the township committee that edited it had the benefit of knowledge and could have changed that preamble to make this situation apply.
If they were aware of this connection, which nobody here, it was until very recently. So I think it's arguable that nobody was ever aware of that.
Ultimately, it's going to be up to this board to decide whether it applies or not. And I, I think, right, that's, that's clear, that's what you're saying?
Well, I'll, I'll leave that to, to counsel to determine whether, you know, interpretations can be made here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Graham and my office, we're going to put our heads together and we're going to, we're preparing to put some kind of final, you know, guidance thing out for the board before they render a decision on this. As it comes to principles of statutory construction with the ordinance and conditional use standards. Um, Graham, to that point, could you have the site for that case, that CBS outdoor case?
Um.
Show the attorneys in the room, we're jumping out. Oh, Nicole's got it.
Yeah, it's 414 NJ Super 563.
Wait, just say it again.
414 NJ Super 563.
Thank you so much.
Allison, thank you for letting us.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Allison, you had a question, I forgot.
No, just going back, um, in your opinion, you know, this board had asked for a landscape architect because it's, there's been some confusion as to what's been removed, what stayed, et cetera. You said that, um, and let me see if I can say this, but basically on a conditional use, it's not to accept what they will do, but to have it in a visual for us to see. Is your recommendation also? Yes.
I, I just want to further caveat, it's only related to the 12 conditions that are set forth as the standards. So that would be, and I can review the 12 conditions for everyone's benefit here, the 12 conditions that are applicable in this case. Um, okay, there. Um, it's, uh, the first is that the lot shall have frontage on primary, secondary or collector streets as shown in the circulation of the master plan. The lot shall have a minimum area of three acres. The lot shall have a minimum frontage of 200 feet. The lot shall have a minimum depth of 250 feet. Vehicular access shall be from other than a local street if the lot has frontage on more than one street. Lot coverage shall not exceed the maximum established for the underlying residential zone district. The minimum front yard setback shall be 100 feet. Minimum side yard setback shall be 40 feet. Minimum rear yard setback shall be 50 feet. Minimum buffer to a residential user zone shall be 25 feet. And minimum parking setback shall be 20 feet. And building height shall not exceed the maximum established in the underlying residential zone. So those, those conditions need to be shown on the plan with conformity in order, in advance of the board rendering a final decision on the application.
So again, that's where my confusion is. So your definition of a buffer or the way you described it, should that not be shown? How that will be buffered?
So I, I just want to caveat, that was just my on the, off the cuff definition of buffer that does not exist within the ordinance.
Right.
And I think in furtherance to that point, it, the, the minimum buffer to a residential user zone shall be 25 feet. So it doesn't talk about the nature of what is within the buffer area. It doesn't define planting specifications, it doesn't define fencing. The standard that's presented here just says that that space needs to be 25 feet. Um, and as I referenced earlier in the municipal land use law conformity section, um, the zoning ordinance may provide for conditional uses to be granted by the planning board according to definite specifications and standards, which shall be clearly set forth with sufficient certainty and definiteness to enable the developer to know what the requirements are. So as it relates to the conditional use standards, it's just a dimensionality of 25 feet. What the rest of that buffer area consists of may be related in other sections of the code.
No, I'm sorry.
I know.
I'm very confused around this. I, I think I have a little experience on this. I always understood that when you have a conditional use or whatever use you have, you have to respect and follow the whole zoning code, not just the item of the conditional use. If we have the same standard like the buffer, I can't understand why we cannot follow that one and just follow the 12 conditions.
Uh, so what I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing is I'm, I'm making sure that you all understand that jurisdictionally, this application is in the right place as long as all of those 12 conditions are met, and those are provided to you in advance of rendering your decision. Yes, you are correct in that other provisions of the ordinance do apply to this application and, uh, other, you know, ordinance requirements, other design standards are all applicable to this application as well. The focus of my commentary at this time is really just to affirm jurisdictional, uh, approach for this board. Um, and that the planning board maintains jurisdiction as long as all 12 of those standards, as worded in their presentation, are met.
So what you're saying is we can agree, or I can say we can agree that it is, it is an allowed conditional use, but we don't think that the site plan meets the rest of the zoning. So those are two separate, two separate decisions.
Okay. I hope that helps clear things up. Any other questions?
Yeah.
So Mr. Benbar, I was going to ask a question of Graham, but we should finish the question then.
Mr. Why don't we finish Keller? Yeah, finish Levine, exactly. Yeah, finish Keller, then come back to Graham.
Okay, Mr. Benbar. Yeah. I know you got questions, we need to.
We're going to get to.
Yep, Mr. Levine needs to question first and then we'll get to the public. Mr. Levine?
Yeah. So Eric, you testified a lot about 609.3, obviously. Again, you've read it, you've got a copy of it, and the whole nine yards. But just for our record, I know it's actually been written, read into the record a couple of times, but just to refresh folks' recollection, the very first sentence of 609.3 says, "Within the CD, B1, B2A, B2B, B2C, B3, B4, OR1, OR2, OR3, and CMO zones in which an application for development of a residential zone or use, a buffer shall be provided," period. The second sentence immediately after that says, "No development is permitted in the buffer area," period. So, and we've talked of, and we've made our positions clear, you know, I, I've made my position clear, as DePeto has as well, is the way that 609.3 is set up with all of the, uh, A through F subsections set up underneath there, that those go on to explain the nature and the characteristics of the buffer that are required in those zones. But it does also say, under 609.3, "No development is permitted in the buffer area." So moving on to the conditional use, the specific 12 conditional use standards applicable to a house of worship under 606.2D1. Among the 12, there are two. One says, "A minimum buffer to residential, uh, 25 feet is required." There's another conditional use that says, "The minimum parking setback shall be 20 feet." So comparing those two dimensions, 606.2D1 contemplates and allows the installation of parking within the buffer. So with that being the case, with those two ordinances being that inconsistent, how can you reasonably conclude that the buffer requirement of 609.3 applies to a house of worship if 609.3 flatly says no development is permitted in the buffer area?
Because it, it, the parking setback of 20 feet would be to a non, to, to something other than a residential use. I don't find it inconsistent at all. It's saying that, yes, you could put it within 20 feet, but that adjacent property better not be residential use because you have a requirement for 25 foot buffer. You find that all in, in many, many zoning ordinances where, and this is why you need to read everything and not pick it apart, is that, sure, you can put the parking lot within 20 feet as long as it's something other than a residential use. I, I think it's very clear. You know, buffers generally, I, I, I'll leave it as generally, typically are between different types of uses, multifamily to single family, commercial to single family, even commercial to multifamily. You're creating a buffer, a screen between different uses. It's a basic premise of zoning. So I don't find it inconsistent at all.
But all of the uses in those itemized, uh, zones, uh, those non-residential zones, the permitted uses are non-residential. The house of worship is a conditionally permitted use in a residential zone. In fact, our planner testified to the fact that it's not unusual to conditionally permit institutional uses like houses of worship in residential zones, because traditionally and historically, that's where they've been cited. People walked in their local neighborhood house of worship, but that zoning recognizes that reality. It's very different from, uh, non-residential uses that would be permitted in non-residential zones that 609.3 applies to on its face.
Put, but for that first sentence in 609.3, and we, I, I will, you know, respectfully disagree with Mr. Pedo, with you, with Mr. Ricky. Other than that sentence, everything else talks about what is a buffer. Only that first sentence tells you where it applies in this section. Other sections of the ordinance, the conditional uses, you must provide a buffer. 516.3 says that you have to have a buffer between a residential use and a parking lot. Doesn't say a commercial parking lot, any parking lot. You have to provide a buffer, and it specifically refers you to 609.3. I, I'm not going to say anything different. I believe that the buffer is what is defined within here. You know, section, I, I will, section A defines the width of the buffer as it relates to the first sentence. Everything else talks about what constitutes a buffer, because the ordinance doesn't define it. This is the only place where it goes and says, "This is what constitutes a buffer." And, and if you go to the very simple thing and look in the dictionary as to what a buffer is, it's a shield between different, in this case, two uses.
So I won't, I won't belabor the point any further, but it's my position, I think Mr. Pedo's as well, and everybody else's weighed in on this, is that that but for is an awfully big but for. That first sentence is what sets the parameters for everything that follows. It should not be dismissed as trivial, but we made that point. Moving on.
I don't, I, I disagree.
I understand. You, you've referred, in Ms. Dory's letter and in your testimony, you've referred to section 516.3 in the buffers, uh, for parking and loading areas. And that specifically says that the buffer shall be a buffer in accordance with six, with section 609.3, correct?
Correct.
And there are in fact a number of other ordinance sections that are tied to the list of non-residential, uh, zones in which 609.3 applies, uh, that have similar language. Is that, I mean, you said it's important to read the entire ordinance, correct?
Well, I mean, I'm not re, reading, uh, a, a zoning requirement for a commercial zone doesn't apply here. We're talking about re, reading connected sections of the ordinance together. And you have the conditional use standard 516, which talks about all applications, and it brings in 609.3, that's the ordinance.
That's right. And similarly, 606.64, the neighborhood business B3 zone, has a requirement that should be, shall comply with the buffer requirements established under 609.3 herein. The exact same language appears in 606.61, the highway business B2 zone, 606.62, the highway business B2B zone, the B2C zone, several of which are listed in section 609.3. They all explicitly say, "Shall comply with the buffer requirements established under section 609.3." So in at least, my, this is my question, in at least six different places in the ordinance, 609.3 is expressly made to apply. So with that being, and understanding that the conditional use ordinance, uh, that was amended as recently as 2023, does not include that language. So the, the question is, how do you explain the governing body's failure to insert that same language in the conditional use requirements for a house of worship in 609.3 if it was in fact intended to apply there? When they made a point of doing it repeatedly in other sections of the ordinance?
All those other zones that you referenced are all commercial zones, they're all business zones. We're talking about conditional use in a residential zone.
Exactly.
I agree. So, you know, it, it's, 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 it's still, it specifically states that it's a buffer.
So earlier on, when Ms. Dory was, uh, giving you your direct testimony, you had acknowledged that you're generally familiar with some of the rules of construction of, uh, of statutes and ordinances, including the, the general rule of thumb that the, uh, specific ordinance provisions take precedence over the general. That general, that's a general rule of thumb. Is that, you're generally familiar with that?
Generally, yes.
And in your, I believe in your, uh, letter, you had referred to the design standards in, in 516 as kind of uniformly or generally applicable throughout the town. Is that your position?
Yeah, I mean, one of the board members read the preamble. It says, "DRC 516 as a whole applies only to uses requiring site plan approval." So it wouldn't apply to a single family home, um, you know, unless otherwise stated. So yes, it applies to everything that comes before a planning board or a zoning board. It's applicable, you must comply with that. Or, you know, whether it's a design waiver or a variance, you know, is another story.
And they're generally applicable. And 606.2D1 are the specific 12 conditional use standards for the specific house of worship conditional use. Isn't that right?
That is correct.
And that section does not contain a single reference to the buffer requirements of 609.3, correct?
It does not.
All right. So are you familiar with the Supreme Court's holding in PRB Enterprises Inc. versus South Brunswick Planning Ward?
Uh, no.
Are you familiar with the court's holding in Lincoln Heights versus Township Cranford?
No.
So this is more of a legal argument, but, uh, the reason I raised those cases, and it's consistent with what Mr. Pedo was explaining, he was reading the specific section of the MLUL that defines conditional uses and emphasizing the importance of having specific, specifically applicable conditional use requirements that apply only to the conditional use. He also expressed that that was consistent with his professional opinion. I raised those two cases because it's also been a matter of decisional case law in New Jersey that conditional use requirements must be specific and must be tailored only to the particular conditional use at issue. Which is, furthers the argument as to why the general, uh, design standards in 516, an entirely different section from section 600, do not rise to the level of conditional use requirements and would not divest this board of jurisdiction.
So can I ask a question?
To counsel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that means that the only way that a conditional use can be approved is following those 12 conditions.
That's right.
Everything else in the code doesn't matter? If we have a design standard, we have all of that, doesn't matter in a conditional use?
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. The, the allegation that the, that the objector has been making is that we need a D3 variance from the zoning board. And I'm arguing against that. And I'm getting the sense that with the benefit of Mr. Pedo's testimony and some of the other follow-up questions, that the board is getting a, a better grasp of that particular issue. I really just wanted to kind of close the, uh, close the door on that, that it is not a jurisdictional, which troublingly was expressed as still an open issue as recently as at the end of the last hearing. Here we are, you know, six months in, hoping to try to close the door on that, on that particular issue. And I think that's in furtherance, and that's in furtherance of that argument.
Are you satisfied that you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think we would need to advise also for nobody to talk to you about that.
If I could just try to simply break it down, so, pardon me, because I don't have the extensive knowledge of the subject. So, um, the D, conditional use standards for this particular use for a house of worship, right, that all these, if they are violating any of these, the zoning board would need to get a case because they would need to get a.
I understand that.
Okay, all right, I just take backup. So otherwise, yeah, we'll provide some additional evidence.
So those, Mr. Keller, those non-residential zones where 609.3 in the first sentence makes clear that it explicitly applies to, are you familiar with any of the permitted uses in those zones, the highway business zones, neighborhood business zones?
No, but I'm presuming they're all non-residential uses. I didn't look at that because it's not applicable to the, to this application.
So it wouldn't, you would, it would be in line with your expectations of things like restaurants and retail and multifamily housing were permitted uses there?
It, it, it was assumed, and I think that's also why they said it's a 50 foot buffer and not 25 foot buffer. Um, the, the township committee and the planning board on, on review has accepted and, and deigned that it's, those non-residential uses need a bigger buffer, but the condition. accepted and deigned that it's, those non-residential uses need a bigger buffer, but the conditional use is, is 25 feet, you know? And there's still a separation. Okay, you know, the jurisdiction lies with the board, you know, that's what Mr. Pedo has said, it's Mr. Levine's opinion, I think your counsel is kind of implying that. My point is that a buffer is still a buffer and it needs to meet certain standards and they're not met. So it's a design issue, not a jurisdictional issue then, if that's what collectively is a decision, but there's still a design issue.
And you're talking about the, the design issues, the characteristics of a buffer that are listed in 609.3.
Right. And that you have a sand filter and a vegetative filter strip in there, which cannot be put vertical, you got sand and you have ground cover.
Right, which we've already represented to the board on more than one occasion that we are willing to take out. We're also, you know, putting a fine point on our stormwater management plan, but all this kind of notion of, well, do we really know if the sand filter is physically in or in, in not the buffer? I mean, it's going to be a pretty black and white issue. Either it's going to be encroached into the 25-foot buffer or it's not. So it should not be a matter of deep discernment and, and interpretation, but be that as, as it may. So we talked about the permitted uses in those residential zones. So you probably not, didn't probably take a look at the bulk standards in those.
No, I didn't.
So just, you know, by way of, you are familiar though with some of the bulk standards for the house of worship, the conditional use, like the minimum three-acre lot.
Yeah.
The 40-foot side yard setback, the 50-foot rear yard setback. So just informationally, the highway business B2A zone, the minimum lot size is one acre as opposed to three. The maximum lot coverage requirement is 80% as opposed to 35% for our application. Maximum building height is 40 feet as opposed to 32 feet for our application. Same is true for the HB B2B zone. In the neighborhood business zone, neighborhood B3, which also is one of the zones that 609.3 applies to, there is no minimum lot area requirement. There's only a minimum lot width requirement of 40 feet. It permits 75% lot coverage and allows a side yard setback of zero feet and a rear yard setback of 25 feet. So my question, Mr. Keller, is you acknowledge that the nature of the uses and the intensity of the uses might dictate not only the size of the buffer, 25 versus 50, isn't it also reasonable to assume that would also dictate the required characteristics of that buffer? Whether or not you need this double staggered row of landscaping, whether or not you need a fence along the line, all of those are the things as well?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, it's, you know, the, the buffer standards talk about, you know, putting aside the width requirement, you know, it talks about how they're constructed, you know? Maybe in a 25-foot buffer, putting a double staggered row, I mean, from a design perspective, I don't like double staggered rows, but applying things, they're not natural. But that's what your, that's what the township ordinance says. And they don't provide, this is a standard and it's clear, putting aside that, 516.3 and 516.8 talk about plant material and, and providing a buffer. And 609.3 is, provides those standards and whether it's 25 feet or 50 feet, then it can go to, well, if I have a 50-foot buffer, I would use a bigger plant because I have more room as opposed to a 25-foot buffer where I would use a more columnar evergreen tree. I would use an arborvitae instead of a, a blue spruce, which is going to get much larger around. You know, it, it, there's means of working within the buffer with your plant material. It's not saying, well, you have to use, these are the three evergreen trees that you can use. You know, it's just saying, you need to put evergreens in there. And there's a whole host of different evergreens that will provide a suitable buffer in a 25-foot. You would use different plants in a 50-foot, or you could.
Right, but that has not been Ms. Dory's argument throughout these proceedings. She's been arguing that the exact requirements of 609.3 should be lifted and applied to the subject property in this application, not.
I'm not going to object to the characterization of my arguments. I think I made my own arguments and I clarified them on my cross-examination with Mr. Keller that the board could also interpret the ordinance by referring to those sections if they didn't pick it exactly in pride. So I think it's a mischaracterization of my argument.
Your position is set out in black and white in your submitted exhibits, so they speak for themselves. I guess I'm still just not understanding why it would be reasonable from a planning perspective to assume that the buffers that the ordinance requires for those types of uses that I mentioned that are much higher turnover, higher intensity allowed on much smaller lots and much closer potential proximity to residential uses, why they should be, why it would be logical to assume that they should apply to a house of worship that's conditionally permitted in a residential zone, meaning the, the drafters of the ordinance deemed that it's appropriate, provided the conditions are met, in a residential zone that has a three-acre, you know, minimum lot size and substantially larger setbacks and substantially smaller maximum lot coverage?
But it still specifically states that you must provide a 25-foot buffer. You know, the, the, the 609.3, that first sentence and then subsection A, when it's talking about those more intense uses, is why they put in a 50-foot buffer. You know, in a way, you know, not to be flip, but they gave this conditional use a break by saying, you don't need 50 feet, you only have to provide 25 feet, but you still have to provide a buffer. You know, that's from a design perspective, as an engineer, as a planner, you know, the buffer is still something that is providing a shield between two, you know, in different uses, leave it that way.
I guess my last question, Mr. Keller, is there's a question earlier that was posited on the basis that regardless of what the intent of the drafters of the ordinance may or may not have been, is it your opinion that 609.3 should apply to a house of worship? It's either a question to you or Mr. Pedo, I can't recall. But as a planner and with your understanding of ordinance interpretation, isn't the whole point of ordinance interpretation to discern the intent of the drafter of the ordinance? That's actually the whole point as opposed to, well, regardless of what the intent was, shouldn't this be or shouldn't that be? Isn't the whole point to discern the intention of the ordinance?
Yeah, and I think the conditional use does it. It says you need to have a buffer. There's two sections, two other sections in the code that talk about buffers. You know, and, and those two sections, 516 relates, 516.3 relates to 609.3. So I, they put in there that you needed to provide a buffer, not a setback to a residential use. They use the word buffer. And I think that construct was to refer to what is elsewhere in the ordinance talks about buffers.
I have one question. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, given the time, would it be appropriate to ask to carry this matter at the next ready-made meeting?
Uh, we can. Can we, can we, we'll get through maybe the public questions and then, then he, I, I think counsel has already said that he'll, he's willing to carry to the next meeting, but then after that, correct?
That's correct.
So that may not take that long, but I would like to get through public questioning possibly. All right.
I just have a question. Is there going to be another report issued on this issue? You mentioned, Mr. Sobolowski, that you and Mr. Pedo.
That would be, what I'm referring to is something to guide the board when they're final decision-making. It's not necessarily a report, there would likely be something. I'm going to reserve saying it one way or another, would likely, I'm envisioning it as something falling within attorney-client privilege, at least at this point in time.
I'd like to open it up to the public questioning, just on his testimony this evening, please.
And Graham, yes, please. Mr. Chairman, open. Mr. Levine.
Charles Bambara.
I'm sorry. Did you have a question for him? Yeah, shh, got to stop. Mr. Levine, did you have any cross of, of Mr. Pedo?
No.
Okay, just making sure. Okay.
I just wanted to reserve, I did have some questions for Mr. Pedo. I was waiting for the cross of Mr. Keller to be finished, so.
Okay, just trying to keep everything wordly. So sir, do you have a question for Mr. Pedo or do you have a question for?
I do, for Mr. Pedo. Charles Bambara, 37 Keats Road. I said that before, but then I didn't ask my question.
Appreciate it, it's my pleasure.
Speak louder, please.
Mr. Pedo, are, are you familiar with a planning report number one dated September 12th, 2024, which you wrote to this planning board regarding this application in September 12th, 2024? If I may read from that report, paragraph C.2, "The board planner recommends full cut-off lighting and that houseside shields be installed to limit glare and light pollution onto adjacent residential properties." I, I think that shows your intent, does it not, Graham, in interpretation of everything we're talking about here?
Then, which number, number three are you talking about?
No. C.2.
C.2.
You're.
Is your question, is, is this related to the buffer distance?
Well, this, 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 in this, does this not define your intention that some material should be on the western side of that property to shield adjacent?
Excuse me, please, conversations outside, please listen, important testimony, thank you.
Thank you. In, in this report, are you not making a recommendation that that space on the west side of the property incorporate houseside shields? Doesn't say what type, but it does say be installed to limit glare and light pollution onto adjacent residential properties? This is in your own report, sir.
The nature of this comment is really to install houseside shields, meaning, you know, off-site, off-property to all adjacent residential uses on all sides, because the intent is to reflect light and keep the glare of any light onto the property.
Further, further to that paragraph E.4 in that same report, if I may read verbatim, "The lighting plan shall be revised to mitigate off-site impacts subject to review and approval by the board planner." So again, is that not your intent to, to mitigate off-site impacts of, of light pollution to the adjacent properties?
This is a, a standard practice that we, we do particularly in this case, given that the situation of this conditional use located within a residential zone and the adjacent streets that, you know, we minimize site lighting impacts throughout the area, not specifically.
But it says, it says off-site impacts, but, but you're referring it on the previous page to adjacent residential properties. Are those, are those two statements not related? Do they not define your intent in September, which might be contrary to your current intent?
These statements are, are, you know, related to lighting specifically. This is not related to my testimony regarding the buffer dimensionality.
Well, but if it's, if it's merely a sep- excuse me, sir, if it's merely a separation, a physical disseparation.
With respect, just, we're trying to leave it as questions that missed, based on whatever testimony provided.
I'm getting there.
You're getting a little.
Am I here, am I here because it's my right to ask questions or am I here as a courtesy? It's my right to ask questions. Don't take that right from me, please. I, I had a line of question I was going to. May I finish? I'm very close.
I'm going to let you finish. I just want, don't want you to get argumentative with him. This is not the form for that, okay?
Okay, I understand.
Please, just keep it a question, split it into testimony, testimony.
I just, yeah, all right.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, you're welcome. If, if your intention were that, that were merely a 25-foot spacing with no shielding, no planting, how would it then be able to shield the adjacent properties, as you stated in your own words, to limit glare and light pollution on adjacent properties?
This is a standard comment related to site lighting that we've employed on a number of different applications to employ full cutoff shield to limit off-site glare of lighting. Given the situation of this site with adjacent residential uses, that's why we included the allusion to shields, the houseside shields from adjacent residential properties. It's not related to the dimensionality nor to the treatment of the buffer.
I would like to reference the planning board to this report, September 12th, 2024.
We're proceeding, it's part of the record.
Please, please go back and read and review it and incorporate that into your opinion.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just by way of clarification, just the, I, I remember that report very well. I remember that particular recommendation of Mr. Pedo very well. We had stipulated on the record that we would comply with that. We subsequently submitted revised plans to the board that were reflected on revision D that I pulled out and read from earlier, submitted in January of 2025, where a bunch of revisions were made, including revisions to the lighting plan. And there was a subsequent report issued by Ms. Callahan confirming that on the basis of those revisions in the plans, that that comment was complied with and that there would be no off-site light trespass as a result of our application. So that was listened to, complied with, and demonstrated by way of revised plans. Thanks.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay, any questions of Mr.?
I have questions, but I think this hour.
Agreed, yeah, thank you, Ms. Dory as well, who will lay those. Yeah, I was hoping it was going to be, but understood. Go forward. How many questions? We have a lot of questions, yes?
Yeah, I think it's going to take more than five minutes. I think we should.
Excellent. Okay, so.
Just a point of clarification, questions of Mr. Pedo or questions of Mr. Keller?
Oh.
Okay, understood.
So now on to carrying to the next meeting.
I guess so.
We did look into having a special meeting on the ninth and 23rd. Both of them presented problems for us, with one with attendance, the other one with venue and possibly attendance. So I don't think any special meetings are going to happen this month. We'd be carrying to the seventh, I think, of, of May. Yeah, carrying to the seventh of May. I think from all the discussion that we've had tonight, we should be, do updated plans, site plans at least. Now we've taken, we've gotten two, two different issues. One, we have the conditions of approval for a conditional use, which now we've separated. Now we have the site plan. And on advisement from our planner, by law, we need to have the final, final set of drawings before we can approve a site plan. So I do think we need the updated version of that. And then if possible, if you could please look into getting a soil testing done, I know it's outside now, this January to April 1st, ideal testing period. But if a company is available and we could get the testing in and we could get a definite stormwater system, that would help us out a lot.
I understand the request, I'll, I'll talk about it with my, with my client. We, you've made yourself very clear and we'll be prepared, you know, to proceed as, as we see fit and best on May 7th. But I'm totally understood and heard. Just to be clear, May 7th is a regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and that's going to be at the Education Center about here? Okay. Okay, anything else before I make the announcement? Oh, Mr. Sullivan, we, you guys are going to consent to a, an extension of time on the application? To May 8th, yes. May 8th, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, that was the, the name of that building and the location? I guess it's written right here, Education, 434 Milburn?
Yeah, just up the street.
I'll make the formal announcement in a second. Okay, nothing further. This matter will be carried to the board's regular May 7th, 2025 meeting, will be held at 7:30 PM at the Milburn Board of Education Education Center, that's located at 434 Milburn Avenue here in the township. No further notice will be required. So that's your announcement, show up. Oh, that said, yeah, on, on May 7th, right, I saw that? Sorry, it's getting late. Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Motion adjourned.
Second.
What? Call of favor?
July 7th. Yeah, May 7th, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said 7 o'clock.